Thank you and good morning. I think we're ready to begin day two of our budget workshop. I'm going to turn it over to our clerk to get us started. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Mallon, if you'd like to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Vice Mayor, transitioning to our next item on your agenda today, which is roll call for the Reno City Council. Breckus, Deuer.
Here.
Delgado, Weber.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Shevy.
Madam Mayor, I think you've called in, but I just want to make sure you're on the line.
We have her as logged in. I think she may have us on mute.
No problem. Madam Mayor, when you just signal us that you're on the line, but I think you're here.
We are showing she's logged in. With that, Mr. Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council. We're now transitioning to your first item of the day, which is the public comment for general. As a reminder to those in the audience, public comment is limited to three minutes. Please address the Reno City Council as a whole. Do not identify one member by name. Additionally, while you're in this room, please respect rules of decorum, clapping, stomping, aggressive behavior, or otherwise disruptive behavior. You may be issued a warning. Continued behavior of the sort, you may be asked to leave the chambers. Please be respectful while you're in this room. First to speak is Tammy Holt Still, followed by Donna Clontz.
Good morning, Tammy Holt Still, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee. For the record, this is a reminder of what was said last.
They actually don't discharge directly to Swan Lake. They go into their, they have some ponds, and the ponds primarily evaporate. Sometimes they do discharge once or twice a year on a single event, they will discharge some water, but that's not.
As I have reminded you. So I went back and I did my research again so I could prove otherwise. They have, they generate discharge 2.1. It goes MGD a day. It does go into normally nine different holding ponds. However, due to the flooding, they only had two holding ponds. They are allowed to do up to one MGD into the playa. See that? Playa. I highlighted it. I sent you this email. Nobody responded to it. Also, I have verification that it did breach. One of the ponds breached into Swan Lake, the playa, from NDEP. We further go on to show proof that this is Google Earth showing how much water in 2017 was on the playa. And you can see where it breached. To further prove my point, you can see that they no longer have nine holding ponds. This same photo blown up, you can see right there, there is a black hose that is taking out of those ponds and putting it into Swan Lake. Black hose is right there. So Class C is in Swan Lake. Class C and Class A do not mingle together or dilute to make it Class A. It is still Class C. That's federal regulations. You wonder why I was addressed that I'm aggressive with you? I see this council putting their head in the sand and ignoring the situation. There are a couple that are not, and they're listening, but for the most part, the rest of you are putting your head in the sand and full steam ahead. I only have three minutes to talk to get everything out that is in here, that I know, that I have learned, that you should be learning when staff has proven time and time again not to be telling you the full truth. They are not 100% honest with you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, our next comment is from Donna Clontz. I have confirmed with the mayor that she is on the phone, has been on the phone since we called the meeting to order. We are both unmuted now.
Good morning, Council, Madam Mayor, Manager Thomas. My name is Donna Clontz, and I am involved heavily with our seniors in this community, both at the city level, at the county level, and at the state level. I'm a senior myself. I've lived here in Reno for the past 20 years. I and my husband are in our 70s. He's just turned 80. We are fortunate folks that bought our house 20 years ago when prices were really affordable and we paid the thing off. So we are not in a position of really being squeezed by what's going on in our community with the cost of living, both mortgages and rents. We also worked and have our pensions and our social security, and we live on a fixed income, like many of the seniors that we're talking about, to try to protect from these potential fee increases. We are not going to be impacted by these recreation fees, my husband and myself, but we know so many seniors that are our folks, that are inside our recreation facilities, that participate daily to get their exercise, to get their socialization, and they can only afford that $1 a day to be in there, to get that positive experience every single day, which is what we want. We want to uphold our model that's here in the back of the room that says, we believe that we're creating a community that people are proud to call home, and we want that action that this council has supported for so many years, and that the recreation programs have been built around, to continue as they are and not harm those people that are in that economic squeeze. That is not going to change in anyone's crystal ball for the near future. The economic situation that Reno is looking at is that rents are going to go up, fixed incomes are going to continue, and our folks that we're talking about, that are our consumers and our customers and our residents, are going to be unable to pay more than the dollar that they pay. Not only our seniors, but our fixed income families that are relying on before and after school programs. They're part of that same issue. So I continue to urge you to not raise the fees, especially on that group of folks that would be so detrimentally impacted by that. I also ask you to take a look at what I believe is a flawed premise, that the recreation programs need to take the full brunt of the need to give everybody that minimum wage increase that's required. I think that our minimum wage workers deserve those raises, and everybody in the salary scale with them deserve those raises over time, but we have a larger whole-city budget, and I'd urge you all to take a really good look at that and ask the questions about why we could not take a look there, and also take a look at ways to mitigate the situation that our seniors are in and not raise those fees. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we have no further general public comments signed in. With that, we are transitioning to your first item, which is approval of the agenda. As there's one item, I suspect we do not have any changes, so you'll be looking for approval.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Vice Mayor, next item is continuation of yesterday's presentation for budget discussion for FY 2021. The first item and department up for discussion today is Parks and Recreation.
Okay. Before we get into that, I just want the colleagues on the dais to know that we're going to take a hard stop at noon. We do have an afternoon meeting, of course. It's our regularly scheduled agenda's council meeting, but we're going to take a stop at noon. But if you need to get up from the dais at any time, please do that. It's a long time to do that. Councilmember Breckus.
I was just, and I apologize, I thought we were doing our regular meeting first, but I just realized that the regular meeting starts at 2:00. So we're going to take a two-hour break? I mean, couldn't we stop?
No, I don't think that we'll be done with our morning break. We're going to just take a break at noon to try and eat, grab a bite to eat. We'll come back to the dais and continue with.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't know that we'll have a break of any between when we finish our morning session on the budget workshop and when we go into the 2:00.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. So we'll take lunch at break, then come back and do budget, and then at 2:00 convene.
Yes.
Now I understand. Thank you.
If anyone would like to do anything different, please let me know, but that's the plan.
Good morning. For the record, Jamie Schroeder, Director of Parks and Recreation. As a continuation of yesterday's workshop, I will go over the Parks and Recreation Department. First, what you see here is our departmental org chart. The Parks and Recreation Department has 76.75 full-time employee equivalents. That number does not include the number of part-time staff that we have, which can fluctuate all the way up to 350 people during our busy season. Our department is broken up essentially into the parks side and the recreation side. Our parks side is responsible for 87 parks, 19 school sites, 54 restrooms, 46 shelters, 78 play structures, 34 miles of trail, 1,700 acres of open space, and 23,000 trees. The recreation side is responsible for six recreation centers, five ball fields, four pools, 16 tennis courts, one ski hill, and a future nature study area, in addition to programming 22 school sites for a before and after-school program. Our core services, we have nine program areas, and last fiscal year, we served over 137,000 residents and customers. I think that is an amazing number, and I wanted to make sure I pointed that out to council, that, you know, our department does have a significant impact on our community. Our top accomplishments, once this fiscal year is over, will be the completed construction of Somerset West Park. That is anticipated to be done by June of 2020. We have completed the skate park construction at Los Brises Park, and we have completed nearly two miles of mountain bike trails and an automatic entry gate at Sierra Vista Park. I highly encourage anybody that does mountain bike to check out those mountain bike trails. I have not done so yet, but I will be doing that this spring. Our major initiatives and strategies for fiscal year 2021 will be to continue fundraising $9 million needed to rebuild Moana Pool. We'll be continuing with the process of figuring out how to implement the state-mandated minimum wage increase, as well as knowing that by lowering or increasing the wage for the part-time staff, that that will also create a ripple effect, and we will need to look at raising the salaries for the regular part-time employees. So those are our 30-hour-week employees, so that we don't have a compaction issue. This slide just shows what our budget was for 2020. The big changes that we had between adopted and amended is we, due to the relocation of the admin offices in Parks and Recreation, we took a .75 employee and turned that into a full-time employee. We've had some contractual increases, and then taking a look at the minimum wage increases. So the big detail for our departmental additional requests, our parks side of the house is still at 1991 staffing levels. We are, you know, we've added 27 parks, we've expanded seven parks, we've added 40 miles of trails, and we've added 35 acres of street landscaping. So our number-one request is to try to get more positions into our park maintenance side. Typically, we are doing park maintenance worker twos, but knowing that the city has a lot of decisions to make, our parks manager has made some adjustments so that we could do more entry level with a park maintenance worker one, so we are asking for two positions. That class series is down 17 people since the recession, so that is our biggest need. Next would be our tree maintenance worker classification, so we are asking for two positions there. Our tree crew consists currently of just an urban forester plus two tree workers, so we, if we're able to add two, we'll have two teams. And to go back to the first slide, we are responsible for over 23,000 trees. So again, that is the need and the justification behind that. The third request, we have senior recreation leaders, and currently they are 30-hour-week positions. These positions oversee the 22 school sites. They are the ones that go out there when the site supervisors have any issues. They help develop curriculum, deliver supplies, and handle any issues that we may have come up at the site. So instead of asking for one full-time body, the strategy behind this is to take the three positions, and for less than one body, we'll get three full-time positions. So we're hoping that that strategy is successful. Fourth one is software. This is the software module that we use out in the field for our parks crew to track their hours on what they're spending their time on in the different park maintenance responsibilities. The next one is a new thing that I'm very proud of our youth services division for developing. It's pretty cutting-edge. It's a rewards management system. So with the 1,000 kids that we serve in our before and after-school programs, this gives our site supervisors the ability to reward the kids for when they do something good. And they get points in this app on their phones, and the parents can see when the kids are doing something good, when they accumulate enough points, they can go to a store, a virtual store, and get things. And then if they've had a rough day and they've done, gotten into a little bit of trouble, the parents will see that as well. So we've done the initial implementation. It's going very well. The kids are very excited about it, and so we've asked for some funding to be able to continue that program. The next one is with our challenges with minimum wage, we implemented this last year. It went well. It's essentially a bonus program for our part-time staff that encourages them to want to come to work. Last year, when we did this in our aquatics facility, it created such a good competition between the employees wanting to show up to work and covering their shifts, that we only had to close one pool for two hours, and that's it for the entire summer, and that's with a lifeguard shortage. So we are asking to be able to do that again. We think that this will likely not need to be a higher amount as the minimum wage increase goes up, because the employees that work for us that are working multiple jobs will likely give us more priority than their other jobs. Park Planner is the next request. We don't currently have a park planner position. That was eliminated in the recession. Our parks manager is currently carrying the workload of both being a manager and doing the park planning work. Adaptive Recreation Specialist is an individual that specializes in helping us with inclusion in our adaptive, or in our recreation programs, as well as the adaptive specific programs. Recreation Supervisor, this position would oversee the recreation centers area. We're currently, that is the one program area out of all of our programs in recreation that does not have an actual supervisor. And then the last request is for a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We don't have a master plan, and we would love to be able to get one, because then it helps us plan for the future and set our priorities. That's all I have.
Okay. Maybe I could just start with a couple of questions that I want to ask about. The first is on the goals slide, in terms of major initiatives and strategies. I want to understand perhaps a little bit more about what efforts have been undertaken with regard to the fundraising for the reconstruction of Moana Pool. I know Councilmember Deuer has spent a considerable amount of time on this issue for many years, and so I'm looking both to her leadership and yours to understand better where we are. You and I have had the privilege of having a couple of meetings with the aquatics folks also on this issue, because I'm passionate about finding what we can for solutions for our families. So maybe just for me, a starting point there, and then we'll go back to the other issues, because I think they may be related but unrelated, so I just thought we'd start with that.
Okay. As far as the fundraising efforts go, the Sierra Nevada Community Aquatics Group has been reaching out to the different foundations. Again, much gratitude to the Pennington Foundation for really jump-starting our ability to get Moana Pool rebuilt. So we do have a milestone if we have to raise, or have a pledge of $5 million by June 30 of this year. 4.6, I rounded up. I'm being optimistic that we'll hit 5. And so we are still waiting to hear back from the foundations, the other foundations in the community. There's 12 that we, Sierra Nevada Community Aquatics is going out to submit the proposals to, and so hopefully we will hear back from them within a couple of weeks after they receive those proposals. They've done a lot of groundwork with the initial conversations and discussions, but now the formal proposals are going forward. And then Councilmember Deuer has had a conversation with the Atlantis, and they have very graciously pledged $250,000 towards this project. So kudos to Councilmember Deuer on that one. And then we will be having further discussions with the businesses to get more pledge agreements, but the strategy has been to see what the foundations are able to provide, so that we have a better number of what we need to go to the community for on that. Do you want to jump in at all? Okay.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm going to start with Councilmember Breckus. I don't know if everyone can.
Our things aren't working again.
No problem. Just give me the nod, and I'll get over there, but I know Councilmember Breckus has been waiting, so I'll transfer it to her.
Yeah. Maybe we could get like some stickies or something, and you all could, or put something up here? I don't know.
Raise our hand.
I feel bad, because I always jump, I'm jumping ahead of you all, and I don't know why I'm working, but anyway. You know, I would really like to not have to issue debt, general fund debt, this year. I think that we're in some uncertain times. And, I mean, I ran back in 2011 because I wanted to see this pool rebuilt. I couldn't believe that, at a time when the economy was good, leading up to 2008, the pool was allowed to just fall apart when a lot of money and debt was run up. But, so it's 4.6 million, is that? And then what is the anticipated, because yesterday there was a comment that this might roll into the, be combined into a debt instrument with the police station? What's the current thinking on the police station debt instrument?
So the plan is to come back on March 25th to talk about issuing the $15 million medium-term note, which would cover the gap in the Public Safety Center for what they've been able to raise, and to cover the pledge that we need to have by June 30th in order to continue moving forward with working on the pool at Moana Springs Park.
And what's the timeframe anticipated? I mean, obviously, we have an agreement for the June 30th deadline. What's the timeframe that the money and the draws need to be taken for the public safety station?
So the plan for this debt would be a loan that we can do draws and not actually, you know, and then be able to prepay as well as we raise additional funds. As we close the gap, we would actually borrow less money. So, you know, it's a 10-year medium-term note that we're talking about. When we first started looking at this back in October, it was between $1.7 and $1.8 million a year, which we've included in our forecast. So we've done the due diligence to bring it back to council. We're now at a point where we think we need to move forward. The first step would be after council authorizes the note, then we come back on April 8th, which then directs us to submit the information to the Department of Taxation, and then we have to come back with a bond ordinance. So it takes about three months to issue the debt. It doesn't require an official statement, because it's a medium-term note, so that's good. But it will, we'll lay out the timeframe once we have authority to work, because I don't want, really want to get the consultants working on giving me calendars and things until the council has decided they want to move forward.
But it requires a bond ordinance.
It does require any kind of debt issuance. When we did the public, the apparatus, it was a bond ordinance as well.
Bond ordinance, okay. And then, so that's helpful. I guess for me is, you know, I appreciate the presentation and the priority listings, and I know the big issue is the fees, and we'll talk about that, but with this 15 million debt instrument looking at us as we open up the books probably in the first of the year, or if not before, is there, the remodel for this building, which I did not support initially because I felt that it was going to do miniscule, whereas the number was really big, and now we pursued a grant, but we have a hole on that. Can the council have a conversation at some point about putting that money to one of these other uses, like the pool? When can the council have that conversation?
Which money are you talking about?
We put aside, I think, $2 million to retrofit this building.
That's already, that was done, put into the Public Safety Center, and they've spent that working on design work. There's not additional money there?
We just got a memo.
Oh, the seismic, that's.
Yeah. Because I think $800,000 in work has been done, and then a grant was pursued, but the grant still identifies about a $2 million hole to do what we want to do, which is only about 40% of seismic refitting. So I just, I wanted to bring back to this table that issue for conversation, and then maybe deter some of that money into the Moana commitments.
Well, we will be talking on the 25th about this particular debt issuance, and I would think you could talk about that then. Because we're going to bring forward the discussion to determine if you want us to issue the bond or not, or the medium-term note or not. That's coming forward on the 25th.
Okay. It just seems to me that the big issues on the budget going forward for the year are not in the budget conversations right now. I just don't want to, you know, those are the big issues, in my view. You know, she's, she has a lot of wants, but with a flat budget, those aren't really going to get met, so it's the things that we are seeing. So anyway, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you very much. And Vice Mayor Reese, we have come up with a very creative way. We have these cute little pink things. We will put them on the dais when we wish to speak. It's, but it's gone again, so it only worked temporarily. So we will put these cute little pink things up here when we want to speak. Okay.
You know, we only wear pink on Wednesdays, so that's a good thing.
That's right. That's right. Absolutely. So are you finished with your presentation? Is it question-asking time?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't 100% sure, because I saw another slide, so I wasn't.
Oh, that one, it was the Neighborhood Services title slide.
Okay, okay. Okay, so the question here is, from a timing perspective, I know we up here at the dais have been working however we possibly can to minimize or certainly not have the increase to the most vulnerable populations. We saw a graph where the youth who go to our children's programming, they are seeing a significant increase. Or, or when you look at the increase they have realized over time, that group of individuals has really borne a pretty large increase. We saw it on a slide, I think it was last week. Can we put that? Do you know which one I'm talking about? You had the bar graph?
Yes, yeah.
As you get it. So I guess my question is, with regards to timing and meeting with the various groups, in particular seniors, I know that some of the members of the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, of which I'm the liaison, have some ideas on, within their own department, where there might be some opportunities. I know there was some suggestions of raising the pickleball and maybe taking a portion of, but not all of the funds that they use for outreach, et cetera, to help to close that gap. When will you be meeting with them to discuss their suggestions on closing the gap, both within their own department, and I've heard it said here today, elsewhere in the city? I'd like to know where elsewhere in the city they want to take from. When are you going to meet with them?
So initially, since council gave us direction last week, my team of managers is now doing more in-depth analysis based off of the feedback from council direction of looking at certain areas. And so that is going to take some time to do that analysis, so we're hoping to have that analysis done in the next couple of weeks. I am planning to go back to the SEAC at their April meeting, solely because I am out of town next week when they meet, but it also allows us to make sure that we've had our internal departmental discussions about what we can do internally to include maybe a departmental restructure, in order to have that cost recovery goals subsidized a little bit more. And then we will have conversations with the finance director as well, as we start the discussions about where council said to maybe take a look at the different fees outside of the Parks and Recreation Department. So it's definitely going to be a laborious-type process that we have ahead of us, but that's why we started the discussion now versus waiting until, you know, the last minute.
And your intention has always been to meet with them in April?
I hope to do it in this month, but.
But before we finalize the budget?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So this, this thought that somehow they weren't going to be included was never, I mean, they were always going to be included.
And that's why I had the conversation with them. It was either January or their February SEAC, because again, two years ago, we had heard the, you know, them being upset about not being included in the conversation, so I wanted to start out on that. So, I wanted to start out on the right foot this year by having that initial conversation. Again, the SEAC provides direction to council, not necessarily directly to me.
Yeah, they serve at our pleasure. They serve at our pleasure.
Yes, exactly.
But you'll be meeting with them.
Mm-hmm.
You will be getting some ideas from them.
Yes.
They will be coming with suggestions on how they believe to close the gap. And, and I've heard that they're, some of the members are in favor of raising some fees in different areas to try to, to try to help us get there.
Sure, yes, to certain areas, absolutely.
We're all rowing the same boat, so, okay. I appreciate that, thank you.
Councilmember Duer.
Yeah, thank you. I want to start, Jamie, by just complimenting you. Since you have come into this position, I think you've taken, quote, "the bull by the horns" and you've really knocked it out of the park. I mean, you have gotten into the details of the whole department, you seem very fair, and you've gotten that big global picture, so I really appreciate all of your efforts to date. And I've been meeting with you every two weeks or so, or every four weeks, to talk about the Moana Pool and look at the fundraising options, and just for my colleagues, you know, I'll be ramping up my efforts too in the private side of this fundraising as we approach spring now. Couple of things I wanted to ask about, you know, one of the things was the senior recreation leader. I wasn't sure I really followed your explanation about how three became one, but maybe if you can just go over that. But before you do, I just want to say, I generally support this budget. I think that you've done a really good job of identifying the need areas. One thing I don't see on here is the ranger position. So, last year, I think two rangers were proposed. They were going to be patrolling the Chucky River Park, which isn't officially a park, it's a series of, let's call them pearls in a park. And, you know, I was really supportive of that because I thought it could hit on several issues, one, parks, and making the area along the river open for the public. And I've heard that over and over again, that as people have set up camp in there, it's kind of driven out the people that want to use the park, or the series of parks from Parks to us. So, I wondered if that was a very conscious decision on your part to pull that back and not propose that again this year. The other thing I wanted to ask is that you gave some really good metrics at the beginning of your talk, but you said them really fast. And those are metrics that I would like to have, and I'm wondering if you could just send us an email with those. I didn't see them in the presentation.
Sure.
Because generally, I know how many parks we have, but all the other stuff was, were good numbers for me. Two more things, and then I'm going to come hopefully on second round with some ideas. So, two more things are the Virginia Range. So, there's so much development pressure along the Virginia Range in South Reno. Many people don't know that the Virginia Range is all privately owned. And however, my residents down there, tens of thousands of them, use this area, basically trespass, and to do their daily walking, walk their dog. There's running clubs that use it, ATV clubs that use it. It is become a major recreation center for South Reno. We don't have a big Rancho San Rafael or another big community park of that nature. So, they go out there trespassing, and it's become an issue for two things. One is for protecting private property rights, and the other is for, you know, just that we haven't really developed any kind of trails or anything there, so they're just sort of making their own, and so it becomes an area very crisscrossed. So, I've been talking with Bill Thomas, our assistant director, soon to take on his new position, but before he leaves, he and I are going to be sitting down and talking about what does this Virginia Range outdoor area planning look like? And so, I just wanted to let you know about that and make sure it's on your list. And the reason we want to do it is because there's tremendous development pressure up there from the Sunny Hills, from expansion of other developments that are already there. And pretty soon, if we don't do something right now, we will not have the opportunities that so many have moved down there to enjoy, including the Wild Horses. Last thing I want to comment in this segment is, the city via the mayor was awarded the Bloomberg Grant, and it was focusing on the river. And again, this kind of concept of a living river park. And I just wonder, you know, it would be good to get an update on that and know the timeframes for that, and how that, that funding is mostly a planning concept, I believe, and where that might factor in, you know, to the overall planning. So, with that, thank you.
Councilmember Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I wanted to ask a couple of questions, and one is, is it Parks and Rec, or is it Rec and Parks?
Oh, well, so, it's very interesting. So, we've changed the name to Parks and Recreation Department, but yes, our commission is called the Recreation and Parks Commission. So, you'll hear us say more Parks and Recreation, but when we talk about our official board, it is Recreation and Parks Commission.
Thank you, because I know, there was memos being passed around, and I didn't put two and two together, apparently. Okay, so that's, that's one question. I also want to make a statement that at the last Rec and Parks Commission meeting, there was a lot of discussion, and there were seniors in the audience, and Ms. Clontz was represented there, or represented there, as well as other members, who talked about the rates for, and they wanted to make sure that all individuals, all groups, were properly respected and believed that this was a great effort by our Parks Department, I think I'm saying this correctly, that this was a great effort by our Parks Department, and about increasing, you know, annually for, on minimum wage. And it seemed to me that that was what the commission, they talked about pickleball and how to increase prices there. They talked about many things, and there was a great discussion. And there were eight, eight members present, I think, at that, that time, so they really covered a lot, suggesting also that we raise the, the age limit, and we were going to find out if there was something through the city of Reno claiming what a senior is, and I don't know if we've found that.
We have not been successful there.
So, that's interesting in itself. What is, what does the city of Reno identify as a senior? And that they thought that the changes should be made up to 60 years old for seniors. So, and then we also keep forgetting that we do have the program for, what is it called?
The Scholarship and Fee Assistance Program.
And we need to remember that as well, because that scholarship program is a great program, and we, they talked about possibly raising that up a little bit for, for some seniors that can use that. Because many of them talked about, or at least one or two of them talked about, that as seniors, many of them have, or many other seniors have increased their, they're in their best years of their lives, basically, as typically financially for them. So, I just think it's, it was a good thing that I tell you that the Rec and Parks Commission has met, and they have had that discussion. So, I want to make sure that you all knew. Thank you.
Madam Manager.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I just wanted to make a point of clarification. With the increase in the minimum wage that was required at the state level, we've been talking about it a lot with respect to Parks and Recreation Department, because they do have a lot of those employees. But I want everyone to know that this increase hits many different departments, maybe not as much as Parks and Rec, but we need to look at this as an organization-wide challenge, rather than just focusing on it all being the problem of Parks and Rec. It's, it's our organization's challenge to overcome, so, thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you very much. Just a clarification, you said that you would be attending the Senior Citizens Meeting in April? So, there's only a joint meeting in April? Is that the meeting with the county that you're intending, or were you planning on calling a special meeting of just the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee of Reno?
I'll have to work with the Neighborhood Services on that. I wasn't aware that April was a joint meeting.
That's a joint meeting in April.
Yeah. I'll also be presenting to the Rec and Park Commission again later this month, based off of council direction last week, so I want to make sure that the Rec and Park Commission gets an update. And again, the SEAC is more than welcome to give public comments at that meeting to, again, pitch their ideas, and then the Rec and Park Commission can discuss them.
Okay. But whatever, you will be attending the joint, whatever the meeting is in April, you'll be attending that one?
Yeah, if I'm going to be on the agenda, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to be on the agenda when it's a joint meeting, but I'll work with Neighborhood Services.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we do need to meet with that group?
Yes.
Specifically, at some point, before we make any final decision on our budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Duer.
Yeah, thank you. Now, I want to focus a little bit more just on the money aspect. First of all, I do not support a fee increase in this area. And I, really, it's not just seniors, it's everyone. I feel that there is a reason for this, and that is that I don't believe our parks have been able to keep up in many regards, and they're not getting maybe what they once got. I mean, in terms of courts being remodeled, you know, weeds, grass, maintenance, and all of that. So, you're paying more, and we aren't really funding you, so they're kind of getting a little bit less. Number two, I would be supportive on the seniors of raising the, the age, and I think it's 50 right now. Is that correct?
Correct.
And whether it's 55 or 60, I would support that, just so you know. But I do, I don't care whether it's kids, you know, young families, older generation. I think getting fee increases in this area is particularly difficult. So, to that end, I wanted to mention, yesterday I brought up the idea of a ballot initiative for public safety. And what I'm hoping amongst this group is to talk about an alternative, if there isn't basically community support, and we may do some informal polling to see, is a ballot initiative for our park system. And the reason is, is we have gotten now so far behind, and every, every park has taken a hit. We've added new parks, we're not, we're getting new parks that we can't even build the park because we don't have the money. When people talk about quality of life here, this is one of the biggest things they talk about, is outdoor recreation and being able to go to our parks and enjoy our city. So, I'm looking for conversation amongst us. In 2000, there was a ballot initiative passed, I think it was WC-1, and it specifically identified $65 million for parks. And this is typically something that, again, people can really get behind. They, this is what they like about our community, and they want to get more of it. And I already mentioned, we have a lot of new residents in South Reno, and very few, very few, just a few neighborhood parks for them to enjoy. The public spaces, they have to go all the way to Mount Rose, and so I think we have some terrific opportunities. The state this year came forward with a conservation grant program that I think we could tap into. The feds have also reauthorized their conservation grant program for both parks and park planning. And I believe that with, with accessing those grant funds and potentially doing a ballot initiative to where you could get the funding you need, and we could have a broader vision for, for the level at which our parks are, might be one way to address this. So, this isn't like I thought about it yesterday. It's something that I've been thinking about for several years, have met with Washto County staff years ago on, utilized myself when I was in a different position, was able to use money from that to build a park out at Lockwood with Washto County, you know, as part of the flood project. So, we built our park, and they built a park. It became part of the bike path that everybody's so familiar with. So, those are some kind of things that I'd like to, you know, some other kind of fundraising mechanisms, besides just raising our fees on our residents. And then, I didn't give you really a chance to explain about your senior recreation leader or the ranger position, and I guess before you do that, one more thing. I know that we went and we put in new sidewalks in southwest Reno, and we tore up streets, we put in sidewalks. The original plan was to take down 100 trees. That was Q and D's proposal. And people love their trees in southwest Reno. I mean, it gives their property a lot of value, and they just love it. Well, our, our urban forester came in and said, "I've figured out a way that we could cut that 100 to 30." So, we would only have to cut 30 down. Working together, at the end of the day, using innovative techniques, thin-set concrete, metal plates, rubber sidewalks, they were able to reduce that initial 100 to six. Only six trees were lost in this entire project. And talking to the public works folks, they have highly complimented our staff. They tried to outsource the root pruning issue, they weren't able to, they ended up using our in-house staff. So, what that meant was, they couldn't really do their job, that the 23,000 trees are supposed to be maintaining. So, I guess I would just ask you to meet with public works and try to understand what demands might be placed on the staff for public works projects, and if some of the costs can be offset through the overall public works costing, because they said that's what they plan to do going forward. So, I just ask you to look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Duer. Councilman Delgado, I don't think you've had a chance to weigh in, and I'll come to you first before we get into the second and third waves for other folks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Maybe I missed this, Jamie, but by the way, thank you to all, to you and your staff. You guys have been doing a phenomenal job, phenomenal, with the limited resources that we have across the region, and we're asking you to do more.
Yes, thank you, I have an amazing team. Amazing team.
So, I understand and appreciate all of you guys' hard work. What's the void? What's, what's, what are, what are we trying to fill in terms of providing services for our seniors? We're raising costs on them and just generally raising costs. What's that void? What are we trying to, to cover? I don't know if I've heard that number quite yet.
Specific to the senior program areas in general.
And, I know it's 2.7 over five years, is that right?
Yeah.
If I remember right?
Department-wide.
And, just, and I know we've talked about it quite a bit, and I, and I understand, yesterday, and Vice Mayor had asked questions of Mr. Lockhart about, you know, the budget that's being presented today isn't in a perfect world, that's kind of how we're looking at it. We'll have to go back and see if we can possibly rob Peter, pay Paul kind of thing until we, until we get there, and we make these legislative ballot initiatives and so forth. But for this fiscal year coming up, we're looking at covering how much?
$180,000.
$180,000. $180,000?
Yes.
And we've, we've talked briefly too about private and public partnerships. I know that's what you guys are looking at doing to do with Moana Pool, we're also looking at the police station. So, have we thought about working with any of the other MCLs, the state with Medicare? And we heard from public comment that they're saying, the huge benefit to our senior population, huge benefit to our, our youth. You know, I know I can just go and pop up a zip code in some of my neighborhoods and know that by just walking into some of my communities that we're going to be facing kids and families that are dealing issues with obesity, with lack of physical opportunities in terms of just good infrastructure. This all plays into people's health. Are we talking to some of those other private industries in our community to help us cover some of that void?
So, there is some hesitancy to do that. I'm not keen on building a budget on operating costs on grants or private partnerships, because it's not guaranteed. We're more keen on looking at those private partnerships for programs and initiatives. But it's not to say that it's not on the table. Right now, we're still working on the analysis to figure out, you know, where, where can we cover the deficit and what's going to be the remaining gap? And then, do we restructure so that there's a different subsidy in that program area? Or do we start looking outside to figure out how to cover that? But again, it's.
Yeah, and I know it's tough, and I don't ever want to bank a budget on a grant, because they go away, and then you're looking at maybe, you know, I get that. But what I'm liking, that is if there are opportunities and how aggressively we are about working with, for able to find opportunities for some of those capital needs that we have in our parks, does that free up revenue opportunities for some of our program? And I mean, how aggressively are we annually looking at working with our partners to fill that gap? And I know you have a lot, you're wearing lots of different hats, and I know Mr. Thomas has done a lot, a lot of that for us, but even now, I mean, if we're able to find commitments from, from some of those here in the next year or two, to help us work a little bit more closely with some of our residents to understand, this is coming. We get it might be abrupt, it's always going to feel like it's going to be abrupt, but is there an opportunity for us to have that little window to work with some community members to cover that gap over the next year or two? I'd be open to reaching out myself.
Yeah, there's an opportunity. The challenge is that our staff is at capacity, so being able to run our programs and operate our buildings, and then try to spend the time to do the, you know, find grants and stuff is a little bit challenging, but again, it's something that we know we're going to have to look at and try to carve out time to do that.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, I know I'm over at the time, you can come back to me. So, I don't want to, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, I want to echo Ms. Duer. I'm glad you've stepped into this job. I think you are, you know, because you're so experienced in the different aspects of our parks programming, so it's, it's been really nice to work with you. I just want to let the rest of the council know that when I was Parks Liaison, before Ms. Weber took it over, the year, my last year, the Parks Commission did recommend that we jump the, the age for seniors, and that was not ultimately approved at this table. I think we still should do it. I think it was a worthwhile discussion, and I'll let you know, I do water fitness now every week. It's my newfound passion. And, and I think that those of us who are under the age of 60 who attend are mostly working folks. And just because I go and I've kind of get, got to know some of the other folks who are the big category, those who are doing, and I think that's probably a pretty elderly crowd. probably a pretty elderly crowd, um, are, uh, you know, working folks. Whereas the regular people are the, are the fixed incomes older. So, that's just a thought to revisit. It's been on the table. I didn't know if, if that had come up, that it was on the table a couple of years ago. I do think we should not raise the fees for the rec. I agree with Ms. Deuer's comment that, um, you know, maybe the bargain for the buck isn't there. And I'd also like to remind folks that when I first came on, maybe around, it's maybe around 2014, 2015, tried to advance a living wage for this category of workers and that kind of fell. We got a number of what that would be and it fell off. And so, in my view, this minimum wage increase is, is very critical to the workforce and our hardest-hit workforce that doesn't have the bargaining rights, um, at a time that we've given others, you know, raises that they well deserve. So, I think we should look at it very optimistically and to me, it was always a policy priority. And I, now that I do water fit, I see the four or five, you know, water, um, guards, you know, and they're mostly college students, I think, coming in and out. And, um, you know, they do a good job. They work hard and, and, um, a lot of other costs in their lives have gone up. So, I think we should try and find that. But on the revenue side, even though we're talking mostly expenditures, on the revenue side, I do want to go back to that since Ms. Deuer raised up this ballot concept. I think we should search under every rock before we start having that conversation. The rocks to me are the Building Enterprise Fund and, and maybe taking a harder look at RSCBA. I know we're going to talk about that later with special events because we sent, um, you know, the mayor has said that she thinks there's some funds over there. But I, I believe that we, um, before we talk about the voters and opening up their books, should make sure that we're running things as efficiently as we can. And I don't think we are in the Building Enterprise Fund, particularly as we're looking at, um, standing up tonight, the Planning Commission, the, uh, the Impact Fee Program, which is a different revenue source, but I don't think it's the right one. So, when we get to CD, are we going to talk about the Building Enterprise Fund and how much money that's run and that whole?
I think so.
When, when's that discussion?
We are scheduling another meeting
Okay.
With council. I believe April 8th is our target date
Oh.
To talk about those other funds.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Bye-bye.
I'm going to come to Councilman Weber, just a reminder that I think we're on a couple of us, a third pass. And so, uh, let's try to keep our comments brief and, um, and we'll get to the next items that we have.
Mine will be very, very brief. Thank you. I just wanted to say that, um, we need to remember maintenance. Every one of our parks needs more money spent on maintenance. I have constituents all the time in the, especially in Ward Four, talking about who do we have, um, taking care of our ball fields, our, our soccer fields, our whatever? And, um, there isn't anybody. I mean, we get to get the grass cut, but as far as I've been out to some of the parks where our group is out weeding and, and, and doing things that we can do to clean up the park. And so, there isn't enough money there. And if we build parks, we need to remember that we have to have the monies to keep and maintain them. And that means more employees and we need that. We can't build a park and not, and just leave it set. So, we need to remember that. Thank you.
Councilmember Deuer.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I wanted to focus my, um, comment right now on the residential construction tax, the thousand dollars per door. And, um, you know, again, you can see my focus is on where can we legitimately and appropriately look for other funding? And I'll give you an example. I recently had a development that came in. It was Caramella. Uh, we approved the Caramella, um, agreement here. Um, it was for 960 homes. That could raise $960,000 for parks. That's basically eight, it was able to pay for about two-thirds of the land for a five-acre park. That is it. All the money's gone. All it could do was pay for three of five acres. So, we have no more park. We have a open space that could be a park and no ability to get a park. And so, something I'd like to explore is increasing the RCT. And no, I know that everything I'm proposing possibly is untenable or unfavorable or there's an issue with it. But I really think that just, we can see the intent of the RCT was to provide recreation to new residents. It's not doing that. It bought a three-acre, you know, and luckily to the developer, he wrote off two of the acres. So, we have a five-acre space with no parking lot, no grass, no amenities, no nothing. And so, I don't really think the RCT is achieving what it might have once been. So, I'd like you, uh, to look at that. And since we're talking about fees, I don't know if we have the ability at our level to raise that or look at it or if it's set legislatively. And then, um, the other thing is that, um, I just wanted to mention, um, let me just make sure I got everything here. Uh, I wanted to give you an opportunity, Jamie, just to speak to the, the ranger issue and why you decided not this year.
Sure. Um, so the reason why the rangers are not in our additional funding request this year is because of the fact that we're trying to, um, finish the prototype with the Clean and Safe program. Um, and so, council, if you'll remember, you approved a six-month contract. And so, we need to get through that to see if that, um, procedure is going to be the most effective.
Okay.
And so, not to say that it's not on the table in the future, but currently, we're trying to work our way through that process.
Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, also to add to that, I don't think Chief Soto is in the room today, but, um, he over-doubled the number of CAO officers that are out there, or yes, CAO officers that are out there with the Clean and Safe team as well, who are actually category-one officers versus
Okay.
Parks employees.
Okay.
So, I think we're getting to the same concern of yours.
I got you. A different way. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you very much. Um, and to, I'll, I'll be brief, to Councilmember Delgado's comments while pursuing, um, private assistance in this regard. Um, I think if you get some level of ongoing commitment, and I know it's difficult for them to do that at some level, I do think it's worth pursuing and actually have a meeting with regards to some of the major healthcare providers, um, I think next week to discuss just that. Because we do have shared interests in making sure our seniors, um, get out. And, and then also for the 180, as suggested last week, you know, the deferral of the Reno Works, $50,000 and maybe a portion of the donation pass-through to the seniors, um, to help close that gap as well. Um, you know, helps at least in the short term, may not help in the long view. Um, but I think there might be some things that can keep us from having to increase those, uh, across-the-board fees. There might be areas where the seniors agree there should be some fee increases and I think we do need to pursue those. Um, I'm intrigued by the swimming. Um, and I'm curious, um, what, uh, as someone who's into fitness and variety of fitness things all the time, the swimming in, intrigues me. So, is that something that we drop-in pay for? And this, what do councilmembers pay? Is it different for city staff? What do we pay for that?
So, um, the City of Reno has an employee wellness program and, um, that allows, um, all City of Reno employees, including councilmembers, to use our fitness centers, um, for free. But for the aquatics portion, um, it's a discounted rate for our water fitness class. And you can either do a drop-in or you can buy, um, a monthly, um, pass or punch pass.
Awesome.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just paying the drop-in, the regular, not using the employee discount because they had a hard time figuring it out. But I'm getting charged $5 and I think, because I'm 53, so I'm getting the senior discount. And if I wasn't a senior, I'd be paying currently six or seven?
Let's see. We have a lot of fees.
Yeah. And six. So...
Yeah. Um, so yes, the drop-in rate for water fitness, um, is essentially $3 per class or $2.50 if you're a senior. Um, and that's if you do the two days a week. And then if you do three days a week, the drop-in fee's the same, but it's, um, $24 or $20 based on your age for two times a week.
Ms. Schrader, I think we've reached the end of the comments from council and I think we've given some good direction. I want to first say thank you, uh, for the presentation and for the work that you've been putting in. I know that, um, you have, um, you know, really tried to pare down your requests and I appreciate that. You've sought guidance in that regard. I also want to thank my colleagues who are individually in small ways working on these issues at times. It's not always visible. You know, Councilmember Weber is the liaison now and is doing some directing of traffic. Councilmember Deuer, uh, is working just tirelessly on the pool and I want to come along and support that. Councilmember Jordan is working with our seniors advisory group to figure out this fee issue. Uh, you know, Councilmember Delgado, um, is doing the work in his neighborhood as well as across the community. And Councilmember, um, uh, Breckus is also intimately involved and is a participant. So, you can see that we all have vested interests in it too. It's not just some, uh, you know, ethereal thing. It matters to us. The quality of life matters to us. I want to make sure that the public knows my position on the pool. Uh, I'm not a big fan of, of debt. I don't think anyone up here believes that debt is a solution. Uh, but at times, given the circumstances, debt is a necessary component, I think, of, of leadership. And so, in that regard, we've been given an incredible gift by the Pennington Foundation. We have some commitments that we have to honor. I want the Pennington Foundation to know how thankful I am for their, uh, gracious support of this community. And at, at some point in time, um, in the absence of the financial support from other partners, we may have to step up. Now, of course, I'd like you to run that into the ground. I'd like to see Councilmember Deuer, you know, she's a dynamo. What she wants to accomplish, she will. And so, um, it, it's sort of like it's the last resort for me, but it is certainly something that I'm willing to commit to, given the circumstances, um, if that's where we find ourselves. And so, and again, we've met, I guess, every two weeks or every three weeks as well on the same issue. Um, and I'm passionate about making sure that our, uh, community has the quality of life, things that matter to us. And, and I learned to swim in the Moana Pool before it went away. And so, I'm excited to see where it goes. Uh, thank you for your presentation. I know we have, uh, are you up next for Neighborhood Services too, or is that Rebecca?
Uh, nope. That'll be Rebecca.
Perfect. Okay.
Thank you very much to council
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
For your consideration and support.
Ms. Venus, come forward and, uh, bless us with the information about Neighborhood Services.
Good afternoon, council. Rebecca Venus, Director of Neighborhood Services for the record. And apologize if I switch between glasses and not having them. I'm getting used to my graduated lenses, not bifocals. I don't like that term just yet in life. Um, to start, as many of you know, last year, it was about exactly a year ago that we stood up the new Neighborhood Services Department. We brought together the Office of Communications and Community Engagement with Code Enforcement, Parking Enforcement, and Parking Permits and Fees. Um, the mission of the new department is facilitating communication between the city and its residents, as well as enhancing the quality of life for residents by connecting them to resources and services. The past year since we've stood up the team has been quite whirlwind. We brought on three new team members, um, from last year's budget process. That included an OA2 that manages our parking permits and our collection of fees. It includes an additional parking enforcement officer and an additional citizen service rep, the Reno Direct. We were able to consolidate all of our employees from four locations into two. Half of our team is now located on the 12th floor where OCCE used to be located. The other half is located at the code trailer over in the corporation yard. And we've now begun, um, in the last month, being able to collect fees and doing residential parking permit distribution up on the 12th floor in our office. For many of our employees, um, this has been a huge change. When you combine a team of communications folks with a team of enforcement people, there's a lot of things that you're working through in terms of changing work styles and changing work environments. And every member of our team has embraced this new department and come to work, um, and put in even more effort to make our community better. So, we're very proud of what the team has done this last year. With that, um, our, uh, sorry, back on this other one. Um, we do have currently 28 full-time employees in our department. At any given time, we also have three to five interns working with us. They come from UNR and TMCC. And what it allows us to do is bring, um, youth into the organization to learn about working at the city and try to, start to get them excited about, um, community giving back. But it also gives us a chance to get a young, fresh perspective in our communications and our outreach as we look to making sure that we're communicating with our entire, um, region. Our core services are really broken into three key divisions. The first one is Code Enforcement, Parking Enforcement. This includes also, uh, parking permits as well as collection of fees. This year, that team has successfully implemented the new motel inspection program and done training with over 60 motel managers and supervisors. In addition, they have worked to streamline the process for abandoned vehicle processing. Um, as many of you know, one-fourth of our service requests every year are related to abandoned vehicles. So, they have been working with the save officers as well as code and parking to try and streamline that process and be able to respond to those requests a little faster. Our second division is Community Engagement. That makes up our Reno Direct team as well as our community liaisons. This past year, our liaisons hosted 37 neighborhood advisory meetings as well as 20 committee and community meetings, um, with a total attendance of just over a thousand residents. In addition to that, they supported council efforts such as the Winter Fire and Ice Festival, the Takeoff Celebration in Ward Four, um, the Mayor's Town Hall on Housing and the Gibraltar Wall Project. Our final division is our Communications Team, which is Strategic Communications, Digital Engagement and Graphics. This team is really the one that's responsible for both internal and external communications. This past year, from an internal perspective, we launched a new quarterly newsletter known as the Intercom. We began hosting an annual employee meeting where the city manager meets with everybody from the city. They have an opportunity to come to the meeting or they have an opportunity to watch it live. And it's our version of the state of the city, but it's an internal piece. We've also stood up the Employee Engagement Committee and we've launched our brand-new Intranet system. From an external perspective, um, we've continued manual, or producing the Reno Minute. We produce it every two weeks in both English and Spanish and we cover a variety of hot topics. The most recent one that just released this week is on the Clean and Safe team. So, I would recommend or suggest that you take a look at it. It's a really great, um, great informational piece on that. We also implemented the Neighborhood Speed Watch program and recently, um, hosted a Facebook Live event regarding tenants' rights. Our top accomplishments for the year, um, standing up the department, that sounds like it's not a huge piece, um, but bringing together the teams, hiring the employees, getting them trained, getting the new processes put into place, getting a consolidated budget put together, um, getting everybody physically moved and, and the building to accommodate really was, um, a big lift and the team took care of that quite expeditiously. In addition, our enforcement efforts have increased this year. Our Code Enforcement Team handled 4,537 code cases, which is a 21% over last year. And our Parking Team issued 9,268 violations, a 13% increase over last year. In addition to that, our Reno Direct Team handled 66,900 communications this year. Um, primarily, that was two people for the most of the year. We added that third person in towards the end. That is a 19% increase over the previous year. That resulted in 27,400 service cases that were opened up for, for city staff to respond to. As we come into the new year, we are focused on, um, streamlining the cash handling and the permit system in the parking area, um, continued management of the UAS program. And one of the big projects that, um, we are working on in partnership with Public Works as well as community development is the implementation of our Bloomberg Project Sprint program. This is a program, um, we applied through, with, uh, the mayor's, the Bloomberg program to allow us access to a consultant who is helping us establish a parking strategy. And we are working across the departments, collecting the information and putting that strategy together. And the intent is to bring that back to council at the conclusion, which is in June of this year. With that, um, the budget, one of the key things I did want to point out on our budget, um, we do have an increase in service and supplies, but that is, it's not an increase to the bottom line. Those are funds that were shifted from other departments into ours, um, when we took on some of those new roles. One of those being, um, when we took on fee collection for parking, that's officers for hearings as well as mailers, mailers related to that. That is also where the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee's budget lives that was transferred in out of the Parks and Rec Division. And then really quickly to cover our additional requests, our top priority on additional requests is a management analyst for the team. We do not currently have a management analyst in Neighborhood Services. It was one of the positions slated to be, um, stood up with the department last year. This person would oversee analytics, not just in parking, but also for Reno Direct and Code Enforcement, as well as manage our budget. Right now, those functions are being handled in our administrative team. The second would be a Code Enforcement Officer. With full implementation now of the Motel Inspection Program and the 18% increase in code cases, the need to add a body in that division is increasingly, um, becoming more aware to us. The third one is a Neighborhood Services Assistant. This is a part-time, um, position and the focus of this position is communication specifically to senior and elder community, but also to work with our Parks and Rec Division to make sure that we're outbuilding awareness for the programs that exist. Um, we've talked a lot about the scholarship program and the need to be able to build more awareness. This particular position would be a person who would coordinate between our team and the Parks and Recreation Team to make sure that we're out there getting awareness for the different types of programs and understanding the accessibility and doing that on the platforms where our seniors and our older Americans are utilizing. The final one is the UAS program. Um, right now, this program is being managed, um, singly in our department, primarily by myself, which is, uh, a little time-consuming on the staff side. So, our request would be to get funding to do a contract position for that, to complete that partnership that we have set with the FAA. that partnership that we have set with the FAA, as well as Flirty. And with that, it's open for questions.
Ms. Venus, can I just start us off here? I just want to understand something about the code enforcement as it relates to, I suppose it's, is it parking enforcement? I think that's where I want to talk about. So, I make an assumption that that kind of a position is paid for by the fees that are generated from better enforcing our parking laws. Am I correct about that? So, it's zero sum, then? In your budget, you're saying you want additional FTE, but that money would also come from a greater enforcement?
Yes. So, in the case of the code enforcement officer specifically related to the motel inspection program, there are fees that result from that. So, the intent would be those fees would offset that position.
So, in this regard, is it fair to say?
Making sure I have Alex back there.
Yeah, exactly. Mr. Woodley is good at making sure. Again, at times, you've heard the discussion that we've been having over the last couple of days about whether or not a particular department or a thing pays for itself. And I know we can't always do that, but in this area, it's one of the areas where we really can do that.
Yes.
And so, I think that's important also because we've had the chance to talk about some of the parking issues sort of citywide. I want to go back to the abandoned vehicle issue. Can you give us an idea of, because I've heard it said that we have lots and lots of abandoned vehicles. Some of those are in the county, and the county has their own issues with it. And I believe the county is directing a lot of, we'll just call it broadly, police resources at that. Tell us, tell this body a little bit more about that issue as it relates to the city and what we're trying to enforce.
The challenge we have with the issue, and just to give you some of the basic statistics, so last year, we had about 7,000 reports of abandoned vehicles. Those 7,000 reports resulted in 1,000 tows. And so, basically, what that means is every seven calls that we get, one of them is probably truly an abandoned vehicle. For some reason, that vehicle needs to be towed and removed. Six out of seven, the vehicle gets moved before we go there and tow it. So, it, a lot of times, it is a neighbor has a vehicle that's parked in the street, and the other neighbor doesn't like it, and they call and complain. And by the time we work through that, that vehicle is moved. Sometimes, it's people that are unaware of the timeframe limit. They're allowed to leave a vehicle on the street. So, that's really where you see a disparity in the calls versus tows. The challenge we have is when we do identify a vehicle ready to be towed, we do have some issues with our towing contracts. And Alex Woodley is working with Ms. Lochner and her team on going, either going back out to RFP on our towing contracts or fixing our towing contracts. Because right now, it's not really profitable for a tow company to tow an abandoned vehicle. So, it's the last thing they're dealing with. They're dealing with towing for ones that they know they can make the money on first, and ours really gets let down the list. They are working on it when we do have something that we identify as a public safety issue. So, if we have a car that's on blocks that needs to be moved because we have children playing near it, or we have a risk to it, we're able to get those towed a little faster. But it is a challenge for us.
And let me ask too, because this issue's been brought to me by a constituent. You know, I understand that perhaps China is not paying for scrap metal, which is causing the scrap metal market to deteriorate. When we actually have a vehicle that is inoperable, I guess they've wiped all the VIN numbers off of it. It is garbage. Who is, whose dime does that fall on to dispose of it or move it from where it is? Is that us as a city?
If it is a vehicle, it is not an RV, then that falls on to the tow company. So, they get paid a fee to remove that vehicle. They're the ones that will deal with getting the deal, you know, the title issue and what happens with it and disposing of it. Therein lies the challenge, because they're almost sometimes losing money on towing a vehicle versus making it.
So, in an offline way, could you just bring me up to speed another time? Not today. I'd like to make sure that Mr. Woodley and I and you have the opportunity to talk about this, and we can do that offline. Because I do think it's an important issue, and it may result in changes to whatever agreements we've reached. I don't know what those agreements are. But again, I have constituents who are concerned about the cost of policing, the cost of the towing, the fact we don't have a way to dispose of it. And I'll be interested to learn more about that offline. And I thank you for being knowledgeable about it this morning. Let's go to Councilmember Dewar.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. I too wanted, I wanted to just start out with a compliment to you and your group, because I think since you've come together as Neighborhood Services, you now have a consistent voice. And I've found you to be an extremely thoughtful person in working through issues. And so, I just appreciate kind of how you, how you address some of these issues. Picking up on the abandoned vehicle thing, so you know, because we've talked, that abandoned vehicles are the number-one issue in every ward. And what I've heard, in addition to the inability to pay the towers what they'd like to be paid, which I think should be addressed as soon as possible, is, and then the fee then sent to, if we can find an owner, and if we can't find an owner, well, we'll have to deal with it. But I've also heard there's no space to store these abandoned vehicles, and there's a whole time period while they're investigating who owns the vehicle and, you know, those kind of issues, title issues. So, given that we have some open space, some lands that have not been sold, I really do think we should do a, you know, an in-depth evaluation of, can we, you know, set up a storage area properly fenced that we could accelerate this tow of abandoned vehicles? Because while you say we tow six of seven, I would a little bit question that, because I have reports from residents, you know, from, I mean, I'm six to nine.
We actually tow one of seven.
Yeah, one of seven. I mean, six of seven are not towed. But you said the reason was they weren't really abandoned vehicles. But I think there are a portion of those that are abandoned vehicles that we just haven't been able to tow either. So, the other thing is that on the parking, I've already mentioned, I think we should increase the parking fees, even before your study. I think even a doubling from $11 to $22 would, you know, we don't need a study to tell us that, especially around the university, where they charge an incredible amount to be able to park in the garage. And I know that this is people's own, you know, it's their house, and it's space in front of their house, and they should be able to use that, and that they're having elbow with other people, you know, et cetera. But I really do think a simple increase could be done without finishing, before you finish the study. About paying the parking fees, when I heard that you had moved the payment up to the 12th floor, I was a little perplexed, because I feel that we should concentrate all of our pain on the second floor for security reasons, for money handling reasons. I don't think we should have multiple people handling money, just from a controls, you know, a internal controls perspective. So, once you get it all situated, I really think you should think about having that go back to the clerks' area. That's just what I think is the best practice. So, just think about that.
Are you think, are you saying have the control of it back in the clerks? Or that we physically have the person located?
We receive the money all in one place. We have a security guard there, and it means that we don't have people going throughout the building, paying parking tickets. I'd rather see them on the second floor. And I'll stop there, and I'll come back later with one or two more items.
Mr. Vice Mayor, can I?
Yes, Ms. Turner.
Add a couple of details, just for context of this. Ms. Venus and I had many, many discussions on what would be best for constituents, as well as overall services for her department, as well as my own for this. It should be noted that there are other floors within this department that are also taking money based off of services. Pursuant to charter, everything comes through my office by way of either physical cash to us or through the settlement process. So, we've enacted multiple controls and segregation of duties, as well as additional security implementation for this to go forward, with the help of her department, as well as having Debbie Lochner very much detailed. Part of the decision of separating that is that all of the parking fees go through her, so it's no longer parsed out.
No, I understand. I would just like to see centralized. I understand. I've had, recently went to another whole jurisdiction to do with something, and you paid one place for everything. So, it's just a cash management issue.
And we had talked about that as well with even parks fees, for example. And this has been a discussion that's been ongoing for the five years that I've been here. Part of that, from a logistics standpoint, is identifying each department would essentially need to have a person down on the floor, on the second floor, from an access standpoint. So...
Or we can multi-train our cashiers, you know. So, it's just, I don't know the right answer. It's just an idea I'd like to see explored.
I think Councilmember Dewar's theory is intuitive, right? We want one place and less people up and down on the elevators. Totally makes sense. And so, let's just have that discussion again offline. And I'll go now, I think, to Councilmember Breckus.
I really liked the pink things.
Okay.
They were fun. We were trying to figure out if they were grabbing.
Ms. Dewar, were you done? I can't see.
Yeah, I was done.
You were, okay. So, let's go to Councilmember Breckus.
Yeah, I want to echo Ms. Dewar's thoughts about the reorganization of this group. I think it's been very helpful. And I think kudos go to Madam Manager also, because I think she had the vision and understood it. I guess, a couple of things you made in your presentation really struck out to me is, one, you know, we did stand up the motel inspection program, and between, you know, what we heard yesterday from our finance director, which is avoid earmarks, I think there should be some, maybe it's the Office of Policy and Strategy, tracking that you stood up a program, and even though it's not earmarking, it is following on a cost recovery mode, or not, and here, fee schedule adjustment accordingly. I think that that's taken this budgeting to the next step. The other thing is, I echo the auto issue. We know we have a problem. We know we have to figure it out. I meet quarterly, as everyone knows, with waste management. And I wonder if, because I've heard that Lockwood has enough land to, you know, accommodate all the western states for the next generations, that maybe Lockwood is a part of the place. They sophisticated landfills catalog what goes in different places, so that if it ever needs to get mined for the future that we experience, they're pulled out there. I don't know. I'm just saying, we all know, and I think we can call this out as, one, a problem, that, two, needs some thinking. And that's why you want to think about it with a management analyst. I don't see you getting any of these add-ons, except I do think that the parking, whatever function that'll be, will come back, because in the city manager's office, the parking effort is moving forward, and we're about to RFP for a consultant to help us design that. So, it may not be this budget year, but next year, we'll have a really good template with some cost recovery for a parking division. And maybe that's how's with you. I think the number-one issue, and I think it's worthy to bring up at this table, is the, especially hearing those Reno Direct numbers, is what this body loads on to your shop, which, one, has growing caseload with the Reno Direct, which is your bread and butter, a parking issue that needs to really spend some time thinking about. And so, I think that from the discipline of us, we all have liaisons, but, you know, the grants, the special events, the, you know, events, I think we have to show some discipline here, because it usually does get loaded on, to you. I've wanted an event in Ward One. I've been cognizant that it would stand up, you know, a little bit of efforts of my liaison. So, I know we're all very mindful of our liaisons taking on other duties. But I do think that, for example, this manned UAS, what is that for? Because we directed you to do the flirty thing, and I know it took a lot of time. I know there were a lot of constituents who were concerned about it. What is that about? And can we help you make the load manageable so you can solve these other issues?
So, we are actually planning to, at one of the nearcoming council meetings, bring a report on where we are in that process, and look for direction from council on next steps. Do we want to just finish this out? Do we want to grow this? Just kind of looking from you guys where you want to go with that. So, that discussion should be, it's tentatively slated for the end of March, first of April, one of those two meetings. And that will give you a really clear look at that, the impacts it's having, and give you guys a decision to make if you want to do more with that or not.
Well, I think we can use that as a case study.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to give a shout-out to our parking enforcement officers.
Three of them.
Three.
Yes.
They really do a fantastic job, and I know they deal with difficult situations of people that probably aren't so thrilled that they're getting a ticket, or someone saying, you've got an abandoned vehicle that you have to deal with. So, I just wanted to give a shout-out to them. They really do do a fabulous job. We appreciate them very much. And as we move forward in the parking study, I can say this from having a future student at UNR and doing some research on housing and parking, a number of the student housing projects are charging $100 a month for parking, a month. Now, that's on the higher end of some that we looked at, but that's, just so you know, when you're assessing what others are charging and kind of what the mean is and where we fall in that, know that the student housing projects are charging approximately, some at least $100 a month, which is crazy.
We have actually, in this Bloomberg process, met with the university to understand their parking strategy, talk through a little bit of the challenges that were, exactly what Ms. Councilmember Dewar was explaining, because there is a huge disparity. I believe the on-campus pass now is about $1,000 a year. We are hearing housing that is near to the campus, it's the same thing. Their focus, from the conversations we've had, is to actually encourage students not to drive, to not bring vehicles to school, and to be utilizing pedestrian, or utilizing bikes, or utilizing their public transportation system. And I think all of this speaks to exactly what Ms. Dewar is saying, is that's how we're going to help support what they're trying to do as well, is maybe a little bit stronger permit process on our side, so that we're able to protect the parking spaces for those who do live in the adjacent neighborhood, and they're able to park in their, at their houses. So, I see all these things come together.
And that ultimately is the goal, that interface of the student and the student population with the neighbors and retaining their neighborhood territory and ability to park on their streets. But the amount shocked me as I was...
I didn't realize it was $100 a month, that is.
Uncommon, which is across the street from the university, literally, is $100 a month.
Wow. Councilmember Delgado.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Like everyone else, thank you to you and your staff, and everyone that's putting in all the hard work. I know I utilize your guys' services all the time, like I do all the other departments. But, you know, one thing I often go to, community groups and classrooms and everyone else, and I have them actually practice calling Reno Direct as a way for them to engage and have a say into, in terms of how their community should view or look like. And so, I appreciate everyone taking those calls, and appreciate everyone being so available and accessible in terms of how we can work with our community that much more better. I know recently, those are the startup of the program, the new motel program. Has that been successful? How much money have we gained revenue-wise, and how does that work?
I may defer to Assistant Director Woodley on that one, who could probably provide a little bit better input on the motel program.
Okay.
Thank you. Good morning, Alex Woodley of City Reno. So, at this time, actually, we have one today at 1,200. We're doing one of the big ones, 120 units. It's been very successful. Some of the motels have invested a significant amount of money, to the point where they're even redoing their parking area, which that's normally the last thing, because it's so expensive, $25, $40,000 to do that. So, we even have them enhancing their properties doing that, so that's been wonderful. In the near future, our intent is to provide a presentation to the council. But up to date, since last week, the revenue when we reviewed the fees that had been collected, and the new business license fee that was created with the ordinance, we were at $138,000, and we still had several motels that hadn't reached their annual renewal yet. So, we have several more that are coming.
That's, that's, that's good. That's what we haven't generated before, correctly? So, that's new to our buckets. As, and Mr. Woodley sent you up here, I know that was a big hot topic for us in terms of how to engage with motels. Can you, has that been pretty successful? I know we probably come back with a report, but how has that been? Because that's always hot in terms of conversations in the news and kind of the gathering of all the other departments to make sure that, you know, we're doing a good job with those businesses.
Yeah, it has. It's actually been very successful, especially, I'd like to thank the Department of Building and Safety and the Police Department, because there's three of them that go out there, the Building Department, Code Enforcement, and Police. And just to give you an idea, we've created relationships with these owners. We provided consistency in what is required and what is needed. I know some of you may be aware of the motel that had the explosion recently about two months ago, and the owner actually contacted us for assistance, because initially, we shut down three different structures, whereas the actual explosion only occurred on one structure. So, we were able to assist him to reopen the other two structures, which allowed obviously for housing for the individuals that lived there, and also allowed him to continue running his business and to continue renting. So, that was, that was a pretty positive experience there. That's just one example.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may, to Mr. Delgado's point, I had the privilege of spending some time with our employees, doing some motel inspections. And I have to say, it was orderly, and it was kind and considerate of all of the residents there. They treated everyone with the utmost respect and professionalism. I was really impressed, so...
Thank you.
Mr. Woodley, if you could schedule me for one of those, I'll go out with you on that, too. I know our mayor is under the weather, but I know that this has been a very important program for her, and she has really wanted to make certain that we are making sure that those inspections happen, and they're timely, and that we can do the best we can with the resource we have for the people who are living in those communities. So, I know that if she were here, she would be very much, very thankful for that.
And I would extend that offer to any council member who wanted to go. I will tell you, as, as City Manager Newby said, it really gives you an insight into, as we talk about affordable housing in our community and some of the challenges that we're facing, going through these inspections and getting to meet some of these people and getting to talk to them and understand the situations they're dealing with, the fears that they have, the concerns that they have, is quite valuable in shedding the light on really what a lot of people in our community are dealing with. So I would highly encourage anybody who would want to go do one. CEO Emilio Lazzardo is amazing, as Sabra said, and just very compassionate to the folks that are living in these places, and I would highly recommend that.
Thank you. Councilmember Duer.
Yeah, thank you. At the beginning of this little round, I just wanted to give a shout-out to our liaisons. I think we all work them very hard, Brad, Tess, and Cynthia. I mean, you know, we're just one person, and they are our interface into the organization. And we have lots of good ideas up here, and they're the people that have to, you know, make them into reality, whether it's a new idea for an event or something we'd like to see for our neighborhood or something that's, you know, big, bold, and different, you know. They're the ones that we task with getting, doing something creatively. And so I just, I didn't want to leave this session without, I think, speaking on behalf of all of us. Two things, I, that kind of leads me to Reno Direct. I'm so grateful we have the Reno Direct service, and I know you've spent a lot of time trying to figure out what's working and what's not working. Like, are we closing out requests or, or issues without really closing them out? You know, have, have the people that called in been satisfied? And I would love at some future date to get a little report on that. And I don't know whether it's a survey that you do or whatever, how satisfied were you with the service? But I think it would be a good one now that you've had this going for about a year, you know, to get some feedback from the residents. I know we generally hear the ones that aren't working, but there's a lot that we don't even know that were submitted that do get resolved very quickly, and we never even know. So number two, the, on the parking thing, just to wrap that up. I think in the report, when I met with you, we talked about parking districts. And, you know, jumping off what Councilwoman Jordan said, I really do think we should, in addition to the homeowner residential fee permit, be looking at installing more meters in those areas and pricing them appropriately. So I know that if I was a student and I only had to be there for five hours, you know, I would try to grab a meter and, you know, walk over to my classes and be gone in five hours. I think that's a general time limit on a meter. But anyway, I'd like to see us put more around there so that it opens it up for that and then it's potential revenue source. And then finally, something I'm very glad that Jamie's still here, because I think something we've talked a lot about and we've never been really able to implement, and that is utilizing some kind of volunteer coordinator so that from a neighborhood services and from a parks perspective, we're really getting the bang for the buck. I think all of us have people that say, "I would help you guys out," you know, and I would, I would donate five hours a week to the city or even three. But we have no central repository for getting those people on board, doing a background check, analyzing what are they good at, what are they not good at, what kind of hours could they work, and managing that. And most of the time we talk about it, people say, "It's just so much work. We don't know how to, to do it." And with all these new people moving into Reno, whether they're people on the weekends that want to help the city, let's say, work at a park, or whether they are a senior citizen that would be happy to, say, sit at a desk and, you know, be trained to receive monies or whatever it is, I think there's a tremendous untapped workforce out there. And I think you were sort of getting at it with neighborhood services assistant. You were talking about a part-time person who would do certain something. You know, there are these people, they want to be helpful, it's just a thought. You know, I don't know how we fund it. We've, in six years of mentioning it, we've never been able to fund it. But, but I still think that it would bring a lot of value into the city. So thank you very much.
Ms. Venus, thank you for your presentation today. Obviously, we've been very appreciative of the work that your department is doing. The communications people also are doing a fabulous job. I've learned a lot about our community from the Reno Minute, things that oftentimes I didn't know were going on or were going on behind the background. But I think we've all had the opportunity to work with all of the folks, Public Information Officer, the comms, Digital Engagement Manager, all of them are, continue to share the story, let us know how we can help. Because of course, we want to try to push those things out onto social media and all those platforms, too. They're doing a great job. Thanks for the presentation. I think, I don't think we have any other conversations or questions, and we'll start next with municipal court, I think, right?
Thank you very much.
Our court administrator is here, Steve Tuttle.
Thank you, and good morning. For the record, my name is Steve Tuttle. I'm the administrator at the Reno Municipal Court. Reno Municipal Court, hereafter, I'll refer to it as either the Court or simply RMC, is a busy, four-judge, limited jurisdiction court. It's supported by 46 highly skilled professionals. We process over 2,000 cases each year, and we maintain several unique specialty court programs. The court is an adult court of record, established by Chapter Five of the Nevada Revised Statute, adopted by the City of Reno's Municipal Charter. RMC's core services are to impartially adjudicate misdemeanor crimes, code violations, and administrative appeals. We also provide supervised rehabilitation services to those needing treatment. We operate in a cost-effective manner. We provide all court users safe and equal access to justice. We maintain the integrity and independence of the judiciary, and we preserve the confidence and respect of those coming before the bench. Our top accomplishments. Although the judiciary is an independent branch of government, RMC dedicated itself this year to strengthen its working relationships with the management teams and the many operational departments conducting business within the City of Reno and Washoe County. Two examples of RMC's enhanced cooperations are, number one, the court partnered with the Department of Parks and Recreation and directed more than 12,000 community service hours to be performed at city home properties. Number two, RMC developed a shared database utilized by all limited jurisdiction courts throughout Washoe County to track competency evaluations of misdemeanor criminal defendants. RMC also partnered with the Reno Police Department, the Downtown Reno Partnership Group, Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and 22 local treatment providers to launch and stabilize a community court. This is a specialty court program that focuses mostly on nuisance and quality-of-life violations committed in the downtown area. RMC also launched a rapidly growing Veterans Court Program. Within its first year of operation, the program, which was forecasted to serve 10 clients, assisted more than 25 veterans charged with misdemeanor crimes. In addition, RMC remodeled its largest courtroom to accommodate domestic battery jury trials. The court now has six trials scheduled for over the next three months. The initiatives and, excuse me, the initiatives and strategies. Reno Municipal Court has three primary goals for the coming year. The first is to maintain a model court environment. We define a model court as one that other courts want to emulate. RMC is such a court. For example, several times this past year, RMC was contacted by the National Judicial College and asked to discuss court operations with visiting foreign dignitaries. In addition, we have also been contacted by several cities throughout the United States and asked about our success with the community and the veteran courts programs. Furthermore, to improve counter-operation, the court installed a new pneumatic system that helps route customers to windows equipped to handle their particular needs, such as sins compliance and Spanish interpreting. The Second District Court here in Reno is looking to duplicate this courthouse enhancement. Our second goal, and probably the fastest-growing, is our specialty court program. RMC is committed to the national model. We believe if we break the cycle of addiction early at the misdemeanor level, then we will save significant time and money by not having to deal with repeat offenders. The estimated cause for an arrest is around $750. This includes officer's time in the field, transportation to the jail, booking, and housing the defendant for a single night. Most people placed in a specialty court programs are repeat offenders. On average, they have been arrested four times. This equates to $3,000 per defendant. RMC has six unique specialty courts, providing service and supervision to almost 300 participants. Last year, 73 people graduated from one of our programs. Each of these graduates had more than a year of sobriety, no additional arrests, and had attained, and many had attained employment before leaving their respective programs. And finally, our third goal for the coming year is to expand our use of technology. Over the past several years, whenever the court has faced new challenges, we first look to technology to help us resolve the problems. We have been able to keep our operating costs down and our request for additional personnel to zero by utilizing technology to a greater extent. We will continue to audit all of our active cases to ensure efficiencies and compliance with state and federal laws as well as Supreme Court mandates. In addition, we will continue to use text messages, which are automatically generated by our case management system, to remind clients of upcoming court dates and payment obligations. And furthermore, we will continue to expand our online presence by offering services similar to online payments and select-your-own-court date. Lastly, our financial summary. As you can see by this slide, RMC's 2021 budget remains flat. The council was very generous with the court in the fall of 2019 when it granted a budget augmentation to prefer, to prepare for domestic battery jury trials. The council approved an increase of almost $90,000 to construct a jury box, reclassify an existing position to a jury commissioner, and increase salaries, and increase its salaries, purchase a license for a jury management system, enhance support contracts such as legal defenders and court interpreters, procure needed supplies to conduct jury trials, and pre-position funds to seat multiple juries. These pre-positioned funds will pay jurors questionnaires and summons, parking, and per diem. To conclude, the court is not seeking any additional funds or positions at this time. Thank you for your time, and I will answer any of your questions in the next 10 minutes.
Yeah, let's see if we can't get through it before lunch break. I, I actually have a question that is related to, and helping our council understand something. As I understand it, we have four municipal court judges, is that correct?
Correct.
And then I'm trying to understand the relationship between our municipal court judges that are, are here and the justices of the peace. And the reason why I ask is because I'm trying to understand, you haven't asked for increases, and I much applaud you for that, and thank you for making it easier on us. But what is the disparity or difference between pay between a municipal court judge and a justice of the peace, if you know? If you don't know, it's something that I want to have our staff explore for me so I understand, you know, the relationship between the two. Because they are different court systems, different jurisdictional issues. I'm just trying to understand the pay issues.
Okay. I cannot give you exact numbers, but I can tell you this, that our judges are paid a base salary with some allowances. I think they get an automobile allowance and a phone allowance. What happens with the JPs in the county is they are paid a base pay, but then they get longevity pay. And they get longevity pay up to 20% of their base pay after 12 years. And so that is, that equates to, I'm not quite sure, but I'm going to say around $25,000 to $30,000 more a year for JP's.
No, that answers my question. Thank you so much for the information. Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you very much. I wanted to thank you not only for coming here and not asking for additional, which you guys have always been so, so responsible with your budgets. I mean, in my going on eight years here, I'm having a hard time remembering, other than one time you held a position for a while and you may still be holding it. You guys really have helped us in, and recognized our budget issues, and I value very much. I did want to give a shout-out, your specialty courts are fabulous. They really are doing tremendous work, going out into the community, addressing specific groups and individuals at the heart of where they are and with the individual issues in which they're facing. The Project Homeless Connect is fantastic. That vulnerable population can't afford big fines and being incarcerated for long periods of time, and I appreciate your efforts in that regard. And certainly what I hear is just, just how truly effective it is and proves that doing something different can really have a tremendous impact, and it removes some of the fear of court. You know, you're, you're, you're going out and interfacing in a less intimidating area, and, and I, I appreciate that. And I do hear, if you guys don't hear it, we certainly hear what value there is in that. So thank you.
Can I expand on that, Project Homeless Connect?
Yes.
Our judges actually leave the bench and go, I think this year, they either go to the homeless shelter, but this year they went to the Reno Event Center. And anybody that, especially homeless or any indigent defendant who may have an outstanding warrant for misdemeanor violation, they can come there, and our judges actually not only will hear their case, clear the warrant, and actually try to set them up for services. Very few times have we ever actually sentenced them to any type of community service or, or a fine because we realized that they wouldn't be able to pay the fine. What we do offer is, hey, in lieu of a fine or community service, if you were just to seek this help. And that's what the community court kind of model is based on as well.
Follow-up question to that. I, I, how do we ensure the continuity of, for example, the community court? As I understand it, this was, you know, a, a large effort was taken to get it into place, and it was a different model. It looks like we have a bunch of specialty courts throughout our region that are all doing awesome work. Judge Riggs, of course, is going to move to the district court in the fall. We're going to have a vacancy, which this body will ultimately appoint. How do we ensure the continuity of that specialty court? Is it about the person who, for lack of a better word, will say birthed it? Or is it about an ongoing vision that you have for our community?
Well, the community court will be sustained in a number of ways. Number one, we're trying to move more the, the requirements in-house, such as counseling and supervision in-house. And then, actually, Judge Riggs is, she actually has stood up another court. It's a high-intensity supervision court. And what she is going to do is, prior to leaving, is trying to get all those grant funds that are provided on an annual basis by the state converted over to support that community court project and kind of roll in those high intensities within that, that program itself. So we believe, once again, that we should be able to maneuver this, this court, keep that court operational without having to come back to this body for any additional funding.
Thank you. And, and two, that along those same lines, maybe we can get with city manager to see what our process is in filling those vacancies to ensure that they're, you know, I think the last thing is, we don't want to see a drop off, a gap, like when somebody leaves and there's not, I mean, is there a training period? Is there an overlap period? What role do we have in setting up?
Are we referring to the judge herself? Actually, what we're going to do is that community court program will, will transition to another sitting judge currently. Judge O'Neill has, has agreed to pick up that program. And so we are now training her on, on.
Okay, but for the next person that may come in, I mean, that would have a whole nother learning curve, right?
With a new judge coming in, is basically, we would not assign a new judge a specialty court until after a year, after they got their feet wet with just doing your traditional, you know...
Standard stuff.
Standard stuff for, for a year. And we'll have the other three judges pick up the, the existing six courts right now. And it reminds you, one of the courts is, we're hoping to fold into the community court. So next year, we will probably only have five. So we'll have two judges working, two specialty courts and one pretty large court. Judge Draculidge does a pretty large DUI court. He will, he will just maintain that one single court.
Yeah, you guys have a, a great engine running over there, and I just want to make sure that any vacancies are processed. If there's an opportunity to make it seamless, would sure be great so you don't have gaps or hiccups or delays or however we can streamline that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yeah, that was a question. So the grants that expire, you won't need additional funds for that? Or do they not expire this fiscal year that we're looking at here?
We stood up the community court with a federal grant that will expire. The funding, the way we plan on trying to fund this is the state has also, state funding, state grants that we apply for and get every, basically every year.
Okay.
They're kind of reoccurring.
Okay.
We do have an existing grant. Judge Riggs has an existing grant for her high-intensity program. We are looking to... We are looking to combine that grant with our community court grant so that both programs will be fully funded.
Okay, okay, so you think you can fold that?
Yes, I think we can fold the two into one another. Because the high intensity also is a type of program where we try to get people into service.
Yeah, sure.
Such as counseling and drug treatment.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, you're on the continuum of the problems we're seeing with the housing crisis and the homelessness. You're one of the, you know, follow-throughs on that and the good work that they're doing. And to that, you know, as cases expand, is the court working under a lot of duress in terms of having the resources to do what it does? Because some of the numbers, since I've been on here with some of our, for example, FIRE, the calls that they're running with, you know, not a whole lot more increases. We just heard from Reno Direct. Is the court still within a manageable scale? Are we starting to really feel a lot of erosion of?
I think we still maintain a high level of quality service. Yes, are we feeling the pinch? Yes, we are. Does every other department feel in the pinch? Yes, they are. And, you know, we at the court actually sit back and really look at our needs and try to balance them of other departments and realize that a lot of other departments, there's $15 million worth of over and above requests out there. And we realize those are very important requests for this community. And I think what we could do is double up, you know, reassign some duties, really look at technology to do some of the work.
Okay. Doesn't the legislature add seats to, like, district court?
They do.
And then where do, where do those funds come from?
The state.
The state. But the state, other than this grant program you just mentioned, isn't coming in for us. And if we stood up other additional, another seat, we would have to come in on that, right?
That is correct. Judiciary in the state of Nevada is a non-unified system. So the state only supports the Supreme Court, the Court of Appeals, and the district court. And then, all the other lower courts have to be supported by their local governments.
So Justice of the Justice Court is supported by the county then? Okay, thank you.
Okay, it looks like we don't have any additional questions, and so.
And you'll be out by 12 o'clock.
Thank you for your presentation, yes. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the body, and then we'll stand in recess until 12:30.
Madam Mayor, can you hear us?
I can.
Perfect. We are waiting for one more council member for a quorum and then we will get started in just a minute. Mr. Vice Mayor, calling your meeting back to order. We do have Madam Mayor remotely on the phone. And at this time, we'll transition to our next presentation for the FY 2021 budget. The next department to review is information technology.
Mr. Shaver, take it away.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, Dylan Shaver, Chief of Staff. The IT director sends her apologies. She is presenting at a conference right now, taking the leadership skills she gives to us and taking them on loan to a conference down in southern Nevada. We're proud to have her featured there. We're sad for her loss today. Please note that I am by no means an information technology professional, but I did stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night, so we will do our best. The information technology department is the digital backbone of the city of Reno. It touches every service that we provide, both externally and internally here. One of the fascinating things I learned first coming to the city is the extent to which dispatch, for example, is an IT function. They provide internal services to every single employee in this organization. They manage the help desk, which if you've had any tech tickets recently with us, they're doing, you know, both efficiently and very, very quickly. And we're proud of the work that they're doing there. They also provide large-scale enterprise and IT project management. These might be things from like our servers and our data storage for the city, you know, these sort of massive overhaul that the clerk's office undertook this fiscal year in terms of onboarding all of our public records. And things like, these are all sort of done with the IT department because as we move sort of more and more into the 21st century as an organization, we're going to rely heavily on services. we're going to rely heavily on services just like this one. They also, you know, provide maintenance, not just to the software side of things, but the hardware side of things, the hard router switches and things like that, that just sort of keep the organization moving along. In the last year, the department has undertaken some pretty serious challenges, one of the largest of which, of course, is moving all of our server infrastructure up to the Switch Data Center. That freed up not only sort of space and bandwidth here in our facilities, but also sort of allowed us to move somewhere a little more secure with this very valuable and delicate equipment. They additionally, you know, we, in fact, just last week, I think, announced our successful transition to the Nibers system for Uniform Crime Data Reporting that was mandated by both the state and federal government. These are major projects. I'd be remiss to point out that they both sort of happened on or ahead of schedule and under budget. Going into the next year, the Information Technology Department has set forth a pretty ambitious schedule looking forward. Part of impartial to the Switch move is coming up with sort of a new disaster recovery process for some of that hardware that we maintain off-site. That is a top priority for the department. Additionally, we have, I think you saw during your special fire meeting a couple of weeks ago, we have a priority towards perfecting the CAD-to-CAD system between our dispatch and sort of other dispatching agencies. And then, you know, also along the fire lines, you know, sort of a new station alert system to integrate our remote fire locations into that system and just make sure everything hums along efficiently. Looking to the 2021 proposed budget, the department is essentially flat is what you're looking at from there. So if you go from the 2020 adopted, which was 6.3, to the 2021, which is 6.9, you would ask, well, how is that flat? Well, IT has taken on some other functions. So for example, the municipal court formerly had its own IT professional. Our IT Department has absorbed that function and along with it, these sort of allocations that go with it. There are increases in the contracts that IT works with, so our sort of large-scale contract platforms. Typically, you see a 5%, if not more, roll up year over year. So there is a little bit of sort of inflation built into those contracts and in turn, it gets built into the budget. The other big change that you'll see here is that organizationally, this is going to be fascinating for you guys, I know. Organizationally, all of our phones are now billed through the IT Department. So you see a little bit of a pop there, but the resources remain, you know, internal to the organization. Finally, as it relates to additional requests, because IT is an internal service department, you see most of these requests are cross-listed with other departments within the city and you will see those in their presentations as well. Obviously, that top priority is the development of that disaster recovery and cybersecurity platform. But from there, you have the Esri Enterprise, which is GIS map service software, trying to standardize that across the organization. And you can see that touches a handful of departments. And then third, you see Exela, which is the platform we use to sort of process business licenses and a whole mass of other data that we're chewing sort of at the same time as Washoe County Sparks, other neighboring governance entities, so that we're all sort of using a unified platform. The implementation and rollout of that is important to do just right. So there is a request to bring in a consultant to help manage the workflow here at the city, understand what exactly it is we need to put into it and get out of that system. Again, the rest here, you know, Park Communications, the main track module, those are really requests passed through from other departments. And then Performance Management Software Platform is something the City Manager's Office and the HR Department have been working on for the rest of this year. We suspect that will actually drop off of your list. Mr. Vice Mayor, I've done my best to allow the Finance Director to get you to Fire as quickly as possible, but if there are any questions, I stand at the ready to make up an answer on the spot.
I'm going to see if I can find one that you can't answer, just because it'll be a fun game for you and I to play. Actually, I think all of us know that we cannot do the good work we're doing without IT. And so I thank them. Rizma, Ms. Kim-Gee is doing an excellent job. I appreciate the budget. I wanted to ask very specifically about the technology and IT that goes into this room. And again, I'm not expecting you to have an answer, but at times, we are just struggling to have it all function and work well. I don't know if that's because we just need a refresh, we need some line item that helps them to get the best equipment. I want to make sure that we're able to communicate with the public, that we're able to communicate with each other. And so if this is not an IT thing, just someone will let me know. And if it is an IT thing, let's find a way to make some improvements to the technology we have in this physical room.
The technology, as I understand it, that you interface with in this room comes from a series of different budgets throughout the organization. So what I can say, Mr. Vice Mayor, is message received. And we will sort of provide a consolidated look at that and see what it would take to meet your expectations.
Perfect. Councilmember Jordan, I think you have the pink boa up.
Thank you. This is our technology Band-Aid for today.
The system works.
It works. Hey, we find a way. I just want to thank our IT Department. I know they're trying to do a lot with a little and, you know, constantly Band-Aiding and, you know, bootstrapping everything to make it work. And I know that's difficult. And I just value you guys and trying to keep everything running smoothly. And flat is the new up. I appreciate flat budgets. Thank you.
Councilmember Dewar.
Yeah, just a quick question. How are we doing, you know, I know we moved out to Switch to store our data. And I just wondered how that whole transformation has taken place, right?
That is correct.
And I just wondered how it's working and if there've been any issues and...
We have not seen any issues operationally from a budget perspective.
My response would be, have you noticed?
No. So therefore, it's working? Okay. There you go. Fantastic. Noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaver, for your presentation. I don't think we have additional questions. And so I thank you for your time being here today and we'll move on to our HR presentation.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Gregerson. I'm the Director of Human Resources, here to chat about our budget for requests for 2021. First of all, I'll start with the existing organizational chart, which is on the screen in front of you. We have seven allocated positions. There's currently one position vacant, that being the Training Manager. We anticipate filling that Training Manager position within the next four to six weeks. And the functions or the classification levels of the existing positions are listed. In terms of core services, we have a number of core services. The first would be, is called Employee Services. That is largely management and execution of the city's group-funded health insurance program, as well as the other employee-related insurances. We are endeavoring to maintain a health insurance delivery system that has an increase in cost less than what the trend is. And I'm happy to tell you that what this council has been doing and the city manager has been doing with respect to the health insurance program is achieving that objective, to have an increase in cost less than what medical trend is. Another functional area is employee and labor relations. As you know, the city of Reno has 10 bargaining units. And maintaining the collective bargaining relationship with the employee organizations that represent employees is really an important part of Department of Human Resources' function. And that is a core service that's provided. We provide workforce planning and development. There, we manage a citywide classification and compensation program, as well as handling the recruitments for non-civil service positions within our organization. Another key function area that we have is workers' compensation, where we manage a self-insured workers' compensation program, which includes management of vendor contracts, as well as with the providers of workers' compensation services. The top accomplishments that we have for the department for the past year, probably the biggest accomplishment that we can talk to you about is the successful negotiation of seven collective bargaining agreements. The city has 10 bargaining units. Eight of those bargaining units were open this year for contract negotiations. And the city has been successful in arriving at agreements with seven of those bargaining units. The major initiatives that we see, we're in the middle of a citywide classification and compensation study. We continue to work to try to bring that study to a successful conclusion. And that's really it in terms of the major objectives and strategies. Oh, and one of the major initiatives are to develop and implement new citywide training program. And we're looking for the starting of the Training Manager in order to start that project off. In terms of the financial summary, it's presented in front of you in the table. As I understand it, this financial summary does not include any requested increases. And you can see that it's relatively flat based on the previous year's expenditures. The difference between amended budget for 2020 and the adopted budget for 2020 is an augmentation that occurred to fund recruitment consultants, as well as the labor negotiator that the city uses in the collective bargaining process. And finally, we want to talk about some additional requests that we have included in our budget. I think I'd like to tell the council that I've been here for just about a year. And I can tell you that the HR Department in total is really understaffed and under-resourced in order to provide the level of service that this organization demands and that this organization needs. This supplemental request is really designed to address that. And I realize it's extensive, but nonetheless, I think it's necessary in order to have that conversation with council. And in our request, we are requesting five new positions. We're requesting one position of an HR tech. There was a movement of the payroll function out of Human Resources this past year that affected three previous Human Resource Department employees. Were moved out and some of the work that those three were performing was left in Human Resources without resources. And so this HR tech is designed in order to plug that hole. There is a reclassification of the Labor Relations Manager to an Assistant Department Head. Maggie has been for some time performing certainly at the Assistant Department Head level. And one of these requests is designed in order to address that issue. There are three new positions for Office Assistants that are OA2s that are being requested. One is to work with the Training Program. Yes, we have a Training Manager, but that Training Manager's function is to develop and manage the Training Program. We need administrative support in order to make that program successful. Two of the other Office Assistant positions are to replace three hourly temporary employees that we have. And those three hourly or temporary employees are performing ongoing work of the Department of Human Resources, rather than peak workload that their temporary workforce is really designed to address. So that's what those three Office Assistant 2s would be designed to address. There is another new position request for a Senior Management Analyst. And that is to work exclusively in the Labor Relations Program. And as you well know, labor relations in the city of Reno is huge. And we don't have any dedicated resources that are applied to that Labor Relations Program. This is recognizing that and hiring, recommending to hire a Senior Management Analyst in order to direct and begin to work in the Labor Relations Program on a full-time basis. And let me go through and count. That's three, four, five. So that's five positions. And so that's the new positions that we're requesting. In addition, we've got a number of memberships and educational budgets in order to allow the employees that we hire in order to stay current in their field. Recommendation or priority number nine, the previous presentation of the IT Department mentioned the Human Resource Information System, onboarding system. Right now, all of our employee onboarding is done by paper form. And we think it's really time to increase the efficiency of that and begin to acquire and integrate an employee onboarding program to help with the new employee paperwork. And then there is a request to fund, under the IT budget, a web-based performance management system, which is going to hopefully encourage our employees and supervisors to use the positive qualities of performance evaluation. And right now, we have a paper-based system that is really not consistent through the organization. And we're looking to the Performance Management System on a web basis in order to standardize that entire employee evaluation process. There is money for investigation consultants. Frequently, employees come to Human Resources with events that need to be investigated. We do some of those investigations ourselves. Many of those investigations are really time-consuming and would conflict with the regular duties of some of our Human Resource employees. And this is a request for a budget item in order to fund that. Intern Program, this is a request to increase funding for our intern program by $5,000. Currently, we're funding interns at $5,000. If this request is granted, we would then have $10,000 in order to fund the intern program. Recruitment Consultants, in a year, we frequently have high-level appointed positions that become vacant. And right now, those expenses for those search firms are coming out of Human Resources. And I don't believe, and this would augment that, existing resources that are available. Training Consultants, a request for $75,000 in order to bring in subject matter experts in order to do the training. I think there's a kind of a misconception that we're hiring a Training Manager, so all of our needs should be addressed. And that's not the case. The Training Manager, although they may be a subject matter expert, certainly are not going to be a subject matter expert in all of the areas that we need to provide employee and supervisors with training. This is actually funding the Training Program. Organizational Development Consultant, frequently, we're tasked with intervening in certain department issues in order to assist the managers and employees of those departments in order to address workplace situations. Oftentimes, it would be better to have an organization development consultant come in and assist with that. And this is creating a small-budget line item in order to fund that. that in the event that that occurs. And then finally, there's a request for salary, salary survey consultants and compensation consultants. Many, much of the work that we do in collective bargaining deals with comparative organizations and this is creating a budget line in order to allow us to hire salary survey and compensation consultants in order to provide comparative expertise in the collective bargaining realm as well as to manage our pay plans that we have, collect data and analyze the data. And so that really kind of summarizes what is freely admitted, very extensive list of improvements, but I think it's necessary in order to restore the viability of the Department of Human Resources. And with that, that concludes my presentation and I would be happy to respond to any questions.
Mr. Gregerson, thank you for the work that you're doing and for the presentation. I want to ask, and if we could stay with this first slide, I want to ask about, and I think I totaled it up accurately, it's $295,000 for, you know, essentially consultants. And I think you, one forward, I think.
One for, right here, right.
Yeah, so the, on the bottom tail there, 10 through 16 in terms of priorities are all consultants. And I guess ultimately, I'm torn between the need for staff, people that we have inside that would be capable of conducting the work, and for consultants. And so it's always just a question for me. For example, recruitment consultants, I don't know what that is. And so I'm trigger shy, we're going to have a conversation this afternoon about, you know, consultants and the use of them in our prime, our city council meeting this afternoon. I just want to understand, why do we need all these consultants?
Sure, I mean, very good questions. First of all, recruitment consultant is a search, search firm consultant that would assist the city in filling certain higher recruiting for and finding higher-level talent in order to bring into the organization. It's a practice that we've been doing for a long time. Funding, I don't think has been specifically on a line item sort of approach, but it's to fill in, the reason for consultants is really to kind of fill in where the talent, expertise, or the bandwidth doesn't exist with existing staff members. Also, consultants come in, in the case of, what was it, the investigation consultant, they would come in in order to assist the city doing investigations where those investigations might be very time-consuming and wouldn't be able to be addressed by existing staff. And the, these numbers are best guess numbers. Recruitment consultants, and I would ask Debbie, I'm not sure, I mean, human resource right now is paying for those, but in the past, I think our practice has been mixed, hasn't it been? Sometimes departments have actually paid for those recruitment expenses through salary savings that would occur in a particular budget. But again, this is, this is best guess, we, you know, don't know, we've never had the number of staff that, total number of staff that's being requested. Is that ultimately going to impact the consultant bottom line? The answer is yes, it will and we would true up or readjust it at some point in the future.
And I guess, just as a practical matter, if we're having to make the slicing, the dicing to get to a budget, right, I, for me, would rather see us fund the FTE positions that you have in the above lines and not have to go into the lines 10 through 16 and that's just, I'm trying to signal to my colleagues, my thoughts on it. Let me ask you another question. You talked a lot about our self-insured nature and workers' comp. In the org chart, I don't see where that fits in. Which person in your, because you have a very small lean and mean department, where does the workers' comp piece fit in in the org chart?
There is, in the management analyst, you'll see that there's three. There is one management analyst that handles the following activities: workers' compensation, safety, leave, recruitment.
A lot of hats for that one person. Let me ask specifically about CCMSI, our third-party administrator. Is that management analyst working with CCMSI?
On a daily basis.
Okay, and, and I just want to say publicly, I have been disappointed in some of the outcomes that I have seen in CCMSI's management of our risk. And in that regard, I can speak to at least two examples in the last year that are firefighter and a police officer, both really getting the runaround. And, and quite frankly, it's only because you and I think Madam Manager stepped up and started to take a real interest in these particular cases that we moved them along. I want to make sure that CCMSI is not denying claims and we are working to deny claims rather than pay claims to affect our bottom line. And again, this may be broader than the conversation we wanted to have today, but it, it tells me that your management analyst is, is working very hard and that's why I'm tying it to the budget. I believe that our staff is doing an awesome job. I want to make sure that our third-party administrator is equally doing an awesome job at representing who we are as a community. And so I'm saying that not because I'm looking for an answer, but I'm, it's more about what my expectation is. And if you tell me, well, council member, it is, this person is stretched very thin because they wear all these other hats, well then that tells me that the request that you made on the budget side has, you know, holds water, so to speak. And so I, I think I've said what I wanted to say and, and again, some of it is I'm just wanting to have the conversation with this body. We are a community that cares very much about its employees. We must honor those employees through the decisions that we make about their workers' comp claims and how we administer those claims through CCMSI. And I, I'm sorry, is this working now? So I think I can go to Councilmember Dewar.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for being here. I often feel that support groups like yourself get short shrift. You know, an agency grows, but the support groups, whether it's IT or HR, don't get a commensurate increase to balance the additional workload. So I have a feeling that you haven't had any new people in a really long time. I don't know if five is the right number, but I know that generally, I would support this kind of thing and we should come up with some kind of a metric that, you know, we need one of these for every so many of those and, you know, you don't wait till you hit the, you know, 200 new employees to get one of those, you have to add it in somewhere in there.
Yeah, the industry-accepted kind of metric in terms of staffing and I realize that, you know, there, you can look at it a number of different ways, but the, the industry's kind of standard metric is one full-time human resource staff member for each 100 full-time staff members of the organization. And so that would put, and I, Debbie, what do we got, about 1,200, 1,300 employees? Full-time employees, or, excuse me, regular?
Yeah.
So.
And how many do you have in the HR department?
1,200.
No, how many do you have?
Well, oh, yeah. So that would put, the metric would say that HR should have 12.
Right.
We have seven.
Right. So that's what I pretty much was sure of. So I think, you know, I can definitely support the need there. I want to support my colleagues' observation about the workers' comp. You know, and it's not just, I think it's not just something that's being experienced here, but everywhere, I've had opportunities to get involved with constituents and their challenges with even getting disability and those kind of things and there's sort of this routine, almost automatic knee-jerk, we're going to deny that thing. And then they got to battle their way back to, to show the case. And, and I think that it's just too far weighted that way. You know, where all of the burden is on them to prove over and over, yeah, this happened while I was work. I understand there's people that game the system, take advantage of the system and, you know, that is why we evaluate closely this. And that may have been happening at some point, you know, prior to, you know, now. But I, I just sense that we've gone a little bit overboard and I appreciate you, you and our manager stepping in to kind of write some of these things that seem very inequitable, so.
Well, and if, if I could.
Yeah.
I mean, CCMSI is, is, is a good company.
Yeah.
They are certainly not denying claims willy-nilly or denying treatment, in fact, just the opposite. I mean, it's their, their role, and they're our partner in getting injured employees the treatment that they need as quickly as they can get it and equally important, getting them back to work as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
And they're, I mean, and the workers' compensation system is extremely complicated and yes, claims get denied and sometimes the reason they get denied, at least initially, are because a claim needs to be either filed or responded to within a certain period of time and if the employee doesn't do that, then, then they deny it. Where, I mean, I've been talking with Andrina, who is that person that wears those five or six or seven different hats about that whole system and perhaps looking at some of the TPAs that we use and the, the model of medical oversight that we might have in workers' compensation.
And is Andrina, I mean, is she a nurse?
No, she's not.
I mean, and maybe we need that capability, you know, somebody who has medical background experience in terms of helping to balance that, much like they do at the HMOs and those kind of things, so, I don't know.
We have two, two responses. CCMSI, if a nurse is necessary in order to help manage a case, CCMSI will authorize for us in order to get a, a nurse in there to manage the case. Plus, we have a model of medical oversight through specialty, specialty health that provides medical oversight to the management of all of our workers' compensation claims.
All right, well, I'll just end on this note. I mean, the, the experience that I had on the disability case, which ended up involving an attorney and which was, by the way, approved by the judge in the middle of the hearing, said, are you kidding me, this is so obvious, this person should be, have disability. But I heard, learned from the attorney that, on that side anyway, which has some slop over to working, workers' comp issues, is they just pretty much automatically deny on that side. I'm not saying our contractor does that, but I, I do think that there is a shortage of time, they do have to respond quickly and maybe they make some snap judgments and put the burden on the employee to show, you know, document the case and I get it. But anyway, I appreciate you stepping in and I'll yield my time back here.
I just want to close off the thought though about CCMSI. I mean, your management analysts are doing a phenomenal job. I just want to make sure that that job that they're doing is consistent with our values as an organization. One of the examples I'll give is just, you know, we have men and women serving in fire and dispatch and police that are experiencing PTSD at an alarming rate. And that type of, of trauma is not always easily seen in records, it's not always easily sussed out and I don't want to see the men and women in public safety in our community not getting fully what the benefits are intended for them to provide. And so, again, I will leave it at that, but know that I have shared with you and my colleagues the concern I have. I know that some of the labor groups are going to try to bargain, if they are able at some point in time, about whether or not they can have their own adjusters or help us to select the adjuster, who is the third-party administrator, rather. This tells me that something is not entirely working, that in spite of your claim that they are a good organization, and I don't really know that they are a good or a bad organization, I would like to be a part of the discussion when that happens and I hope that we will have that opportunity. Something's not entirely working or else it wouldn't be reaching us at this level. And so I, I appreciate, I know the mayor is incredibly invested in this area. She is under the weather today, so she might not want to spend a lot of time on the phone with us, but know that this is a concern for her as well and I'll turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Brekis.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I appreciate your presentation. I guess the question is on the, can you bring up the, the slides about the, the different requests?
Sure.
Yeah, so, these are above and beyond what would be in your services and supplies number, or they would roll up into that, right? They would roll into that?
Yes, they would be allocated to the appropriate category.
Okay. And are you recommending, Ms. Finance Manager, that we do that on all of those?
No, I have not.
Okay, so these are above and beyond, yeah. And, and I could see that because I'm trying to dice down, if we don't add positions, which of those consultant ones, you know, you can put this consultant item on it, but if you don't have anyone to man the, you know, staff the effort, then, you know, why do it? I, I guess, and I didn't know about the workman's comp with the company. My focus has been, since I came on, we got the internal auditor on, was the risk manager position, we gave that. And last time I checked the city website, which was in the last couple of weeks, it's out for recruitment and I just, I've had a hard time trying to figure out, because I, I, I think we brought that position forward in last year's budget. I was very excited about it. I think it does have something to do with those workman's comp questions and I'm just wondering why we're into the third quarter, almost the fourth quarter of the FY and the recruitment's just now out on the table. Is it just a workload you weren't able to, to get to it or?
Workers' comp is within the finance department and I believe we have gone out with a private recruitment on that one. It's taken us a while to get the, get the bid and get the contract to do that.
The risk manager position, yeah, because I, I mean, I've asked you that probably, because you and I meet twice a month, more or less, and I've asked, you know, five or six times about why it's taken so long. I'm not, I'm not poking blame, I'm just, I think when you come into budget and there's positions still on the table that didn't get filled last year and you, you're really tight and you're being told no new positions, it's like, well, if we gave you that position, why didn't it get filled and is it still the priority? I, I think it's the priority to me, I think from what I heard from him, it's a priority.
If, if I could.
Yeah.
Just say a couple of things. I, I think clearly it's a priority, the organization, an organization our size without a full-time risk manager, that's a huge hole in the expertise that the organization has. It's an exempt position, non-civil service position, part of human resources recruitment. Andrea is the person who has all of those hats and, and it's not only Andrea, everybody's wearing multiple sorts of hats. It took too long, I'm sorry to say that. Part of it was to get the information from the recruiter, part of it was just putting together the information that we needed to, to hire the search firm in order to do it. In a perfect world, risk manager recruitment would have been a, a recruitment that human resources should have been able to handle, but we just don't have the hands in order to do it. And it takes, it takes too long, everything takes too long.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, standing in front of you, the training manager, well, we're in the, at the end of that selection process, we're going to have finalist interviews, that's been far too long in the pipeline. And I don't know, you know, what to say other than, I'm, you know, I'm sorry, I'm not going to blame anybody for the period of time that it's taking. The funding requests here that relate to training are, are important because the training manager, without a budget, is going to be like orchestra conductor without an orchestra.
Okay.
So we've got the training manager position, we don't have a budget for it and we need a budget if it's going to be a viable training program.
Okay, so I, I do understand that. I understand the risk manager position is, is important and the, it's a case study in why we, why the lack of resources in HR, you know, don't result in the outcomes which are, you know, budgeted positions getting filled, you know, in a timely manner. And the, and so I, I accept that and maybe there'll be a little bit of relief when that risk manager's hired to some people somewhere or?
If I may, when we hire the risk manager, the intention is to take some of the work that HR has been doing off of their plate and some of the work city attorney has been doing off of their plate. And then also including both those departments along with the finance department in monthly meetings to make sure we're standing up the right program. I want to clarify also, you know, my, my, just saying, you know, you asked me a yes or no question, I answered no, but my recommendation to this council is to make specific, maybe one-time targeted solutions, maybe not adding full, ongoing staff. I would submit that this department has been underfunded, similar to all our other departments such as we've had discussion on overtime and severance and the other things where every single department in the city has one functional area that's underfunded and so in this department, it really in this department, it really is underfunded, it is understaffed. I continue to recommend we don't add staff, but again, this body needs to do what's appropriate for the organization. And whether it be hiring the staff, or adding some of this consulting work that would at least alleviate the current staff from some of the stress that they work under of too much work, not enough resources, you know, that's something that the council gets to weigh in on.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you very much. I will, I, I will say and go on record that this department has got to get more bodies. We have got to find a way, I, I, we've been talking about this for a number of years, but when we look at the holistic operations of a city, its most valuable resource is its human resource, and how can you adequately care for that human resource when you're asking people onboarding to fill out paperwork? How, how are we properly bringing people on to communicate our values and our missions and our, those sorts of things, when we don't have the people to adequately do it? And those people, our payroll is so ridiculously complex. When I look at the numbers, we have seven people, I had to look at it twice and go, you, you're kidding me, that we only have that many people to deal with all of the negotiations? Madam Manager, I will go on the record saying, we have got to get more relief here. I would not put words in our HR director's mouth, but I would have to guess, the nature in which this department has been stretched thin, and people whose level of professionalism should be focused on the bigger 30,000-foot perspective, I would have to imagine this is probably a part of the reason you may be leaving. We have got to get more people, if we say our most valuable resource is our human resource, we got to put the resources behind it to make it solid, so.
It's, it's 98% of the reason that I'm leaving.
Thank you. I'm leaving right there.
Okay, I think that that's all the questions we have for you today.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I was just hearing the phone squeak, so I take it that you're with us. Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, thank you so much. Mr. Gregerson, I just want to tell you, thank you so much for your honesty, I think it's, you know, very much needed, and I know sometimes it's very uncomfortable to get up to the dais and, and speak the truth. I, I think, I would ask, you know, all departments to be very truthful and honest, I know sometimes, you know, we like to make it sound like everything's going great, but these, this kind of feedback is exactly what the council needs. I just want to say thank you, because you did a tremendous job in some difficult times, and, you know, you went in there and you reassessed everything, because I have had the opportunity to work quite a bit with HR. And I want to say, every single person that works for you respects you highly, and they say nothing but senior praises. So I want you to know that we absolutely, as a council, recognize the benefits that you have brought to HR, so, and I think you brought a lot of needed positivity to a department that really, you know, was lacking in, you know, sort of the culture there, and, and I just want to say thank you, because I think you've done a tremendous job, and everyone that works for you sings your praises. I also want to say, Marlene, you know, she's been with us for a long time, and I know she always talks about retirement, but she's been tremendous to work with, and she's, you know, you have so many people up there that are professional, and they know those jobs inside and out, and they have been stretched thin, so I think Councilwoman Jordan, you know, sort of hit the nail on the head, and, and I definitely think, and we've talked about this for a long time, and I think in some capacity, we, we wanted a little bit stability, and, and for you to come in and kind of assess what was going on, so this is very needed feedback, and we certainly won't take it lightly. I, I do have one question, but I do, I, I just want you to know overall that we're really grateful, and you've done a great job with, you know, the little resources you've had. One of the things, and Vice Mayor brought this up, and, and he was trying to, you know, sort of allude to the workman's comp issue, I guess, are there other, are there other agencies in this space that, or, or they're just, you know, sort of a couple, a handful that, that do the workman's comp claims for cities? Is it sort of a broad space, or not that broad?
I, I, I really don't know the answer to that question, Mayor, it's something that I certainly will check out. I know that there's not a lot of TPAs, workers' compensation TPAs, that are out there, but it's something that, I, I mean, I think we need to look at it, we need to look at the services that we're providing, who's providing those services, how much we're paying for those services, and I think we can use competition to the advantage of not only decreasing costs, but also increasing quality of service. So it's something that we should look at, and I would imagine that Debbie, not to speak for Debbie, but my, my, I would imagine that's something that she has in her mind very shortly after the risk manager starts in order to provide that assignment to the new risk manager.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
And thank you for your comments.
That's it, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I know that this is an issue you're very passionate about. I, I note for the record that there are currently 35 licensed Nevada TPAs, and they are provided through the State Department of Industrial Insurance in terms of how we find them, it's not difficult. When will the, when will we go out for that service? Are we in the middle of a contract, do we renew it annually? I don't know.
So, the risk manager position is in the final stages of recruiting, we will get a list and, and meet those candidates, I would hope, around the end of the month, beginning of April. Once the risk manager is on board, we're going to be meeting with both departments, the first thing the risk manager will do is take over the contracts, look at the contracts, review them, see if they can be improved when they're due, what our get-out clauses are, all that, and then looking at, you know, what's available, what we can do, and I have a note on here, you know, doing those RFPs to go out and create that competition, making sure we have a really tight scope of services to do that.
And in addition to that, I would like to make sure, number one, that if you need assistance from those of us sitting up here, that you inquire of it, and that the other stakeholders, some of our labor groups, especially high users of those things, are part of the discussion. I mean, I think they can add a very valuable voice to what their experience has been in using or being involved with the third-party administrators, and so I'll be interested to see how it goes as we move forward, and again, beyond the scope of today, but you at least know where I'm coming from. Okay, I think Councilmember Breckus, you're the last speaker on this agenda item.
Yeah, I just want to circle around, because I, I do agree that, you know, we haven't, this support function is one that we haven't built up, to the degree that we built up from the, you know, a third of the workforce that was laid off during the recession, we've done a little bit, and the workman, that's why I wanted to ask about the risk manager, it'll provide a little bit of relief, but the first position, the first ask, you know, obviously we've, we're running up against finances recommendation that we don't add any new staff, but that HR tech, is that eligible from a different funding source, like the medical or the workman's comp? Could it be funded through a different, rather than general fund absorption?
I, I had, and I'm trying to remember, Jessie, did, did we do a 50/50 split? Is that what our recommendations were?
What's shown up here is showing that you are paying it through the insurance management, workers' comp, and general fund, so it looks like 50% to general fund and 50% goes to workers' comp and risk.
Oh, oh.
So, that is the proposal, but looking at what the duties that are going to remain with HR, once the risk manager is on board, likely those would push more towards the general fund. There is a piece that will likely remain, because they will be dealing with those things, but not at the level they're currently dealing with them, so we will have to analyze that.
Yeah, well, that's modest, I mean, it gets them something, one tech, and that's his top priority, one tech, it hits the general fund half-time, you know, I, I see that, and then the other one is the REE class, he mentioned that, the other ones of 30As, that's a big jump, a senior management, that's a big jump, but then, on the, on the increase, I'll say, in the services and supplies, what's the, the number one? Is the, what, what is the number one of the, what's that CALPERA? What, what is that again?
CALPERA is a professional organization, it stands for California Public Employee Labor Relations Association.
Okay.
We don't have one in Nevada.
You want to join that?
That's largely educational, and we have, one of our staff members currently is going through their credentialing program in labor relations.
Okay.
It's just outstanding. If I could say just something about priority, the reason that these are listed in priority is I was told that they had to be listed in order of priority. The way I look at these is, they're essential, all of these additional requests are essential in order to restore the viability of our human resources department, and to then, begin to provide the services that this organization needs.
Yeah, sure, sure, and I, I get that. Is the number nine, the, the NeoGov, is that recommended in IT budget? Was that in the IT budget, or is that additional?
It was number nine in IT budget.
Okay, so it was down on IT budget, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Gregerson, and again, I echo the mayor's comments and others, I think you've done a fantastic job in the time that we've had together, and we wish you well.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, Chief, I see you're making your way down here, can we have a conversation as a body? One of the things that I'm reluctant to do is have the chief's presentation time be truncated in any way. We're now at 1:30, we have our general city council meeting that begins at 2:00, and this is an important department, and so, all of them are important, I don't mean to say it in that way, I guess what I'm saying is, yours is very important to me, and so I'm wondering if the body would like to take a break for a brief period of time, we'll resume our budget presentations tomorrow, and Chief, you'd be on deck, ready to go in the morning.
May I make a suggestion? If you want to go through the finance department real quick, then that will take one off of your tomorrow, we're right after fire.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm happy to do that.
It should go fairly, I can go through it fairly quickly.
Chief, is that acceptable? Again, I, I don't want to split you and cause you to be here two days, I, I know that the mayor also, if she is feeling better, would like to be here, and so how about if we have you first thing in the morning? We'll go through finance if we can do that quickly. I would like us to take a small break, because we just need to reset the room, and, and we've got a lot of people coming in and out, so we'll see you, Chief Cochran, first thing in the morning.
No, that's, that's great, and thank you for that, I appreciate the consideration, because I don't want to rush you.
Thank you so much, appreciate you. Okay, let's jump over to finance, and any members who just need to take a break or anything, I know we be sitting and drinking and all those good things, so just step off if you need to, but we'll go to finance, and Ms. Lochner, you'll know that we're hopping through.
Well, you'll be happy to hear, this is one of three departments that has no additional requests, so we can go through it fairly quickly.
Do it.
The finance department currently is made up of 25 employees, we've talked a little bit about the risk manager position, we're really looking forward to that coming into our system. Over this past year, the, the finance department took on payroll, so you see in the very last section is the payroll portion of, of the budget, so that's one senior management analyst and two payroll technicians. So we are responsible for accounting, budgeting, financial planning, organizational support, we do a lot of fiscal analysis, payroll, and sewer billing. So for our top accomplishments last year, we were able to do the fire apparatus replacement program, we did the analysis, we issued the bonds, or the medium-term notes, and we are working that program now, so you, as we talked before, that's part of what is included in the budget. We are working through the bond for the expansion of the Reno Stead Water Reclamation Facility, that is expected to close at the end of March, and we completed the analysis of redevelopment agency, and have worked on restructuring options, which will come back to council for consideration on March 25th. Some of those restructuring options are fairly expensive, so we did not go forth and pursue them, we wanted to check in with council first. As far as our major initiatives for the coming year, we, again, it's, it's about the redevelopment agency bond, we need to make sure that, I mean, I have my recommendations, but we're going to talk about that at your next council meeting, so that we can go forth and, and do whatever you direct, and we will be, as a result of that meeting we have on the 25th, we will then ta, be talking with Standard and Poor's about our annual bond rating, but they wanted to wait until the results of that meeting before we actually start talking about the, the rating for the coming year. We also continue to closely monitor all of our debt service, we have come forth with our 2010 sewer bonds are refundable with savings, so we will be beginning the process to start bringing those forward to council. Again, when we can save on the interest rate, it, it provides a significant impact to the, the fund going forward, and we are not going to be extending the due date, just going for interest rate savings. We continue to work on enhancing our collection efforts in areas of code enforcement and sewer billing, those, we've made a lot of strides in our database management for sewer billing, and we continue to work on those things. So the finance department, as you can see, it grew a little bit between 2019 and 2020, and that was with the, the transfer of payrolls of four, or three people in payroll, plus the, the risk manager. Our services and supplies have been fairly flat, as you can see, there is a spike in, in 2020, and that was in order to allow for us to reconfigure the entire ninth floor, so that the finance department is now fully unified on one floor, which has made a great efficiency effort for the department, and it's also a great wellness program, having to walk all the way across the, the room. And as you can see, again, the finance department is not asking for any additional resources with this budget, we're waiting for the risk manager to come on board, to identify what those needs might be, but we are not asking for additional resources at this time.
We would all clap. Let's start with Councilmember Breckus.
Do you have any current vacancies?
Just the risk manager is my only vacancy. I just filled my accounting assistant vacancy.
Okay. Thank you.
That was quick, appreciate you, our finance money ninja. Okay, we're gonna, is there any other one of these that you think that we're, we're ready to go, and is super quick, or are we okay for where we've stopped today?
I think we're okay where we stopped today, the other departments have a little, little things they need to talk to you about, so I think it would be important for you to listen, give them a little bit more time.
Okay, and just as a preview, tomorrow we've got fire, community development, civil service, the city manager's office, city clerk's office, and city attorney's office. Okay?
You know, if you wanted to go through a quick one, I, city attorney would be fairly quick, because again, that's, the third department did not request additional resources.
I, I think we'll be okay if we just leave for, for now, everyone's not set up for that, and we need to get ready for the second half of our afternoon, but thank you, Ms. Lochner, for your presentations today, and, and sort of your guiding steady hand for all the departments. I, I don't know how you keep all that knowledge in your head, it's just pretty amazing to me. Thank you for all that you do, and we'll stand in recess.
Uh, no. Sorry, I would like you to not do that. At this time, we will.
So we have to close.
We will transition to general public comment, of which we have none registered, so you'd be looking for a motion to adjourn your budget meeting.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, unopposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll be in recess.
You are adjourned, and you will come back for a new meeting at 2:00 P.M. Thank you.